To order. Danielle, if we could have a roll call and a determination of a quorum, that'd be great.
Chairperson Golden.
Here.
Vice Chair Pulitz. Treasurer Rogers. Member Jones. Member Hamilton.
Here.
Member Hutter. A quorum is present.
Fantastic. Carl, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the meat of this evening's meeting, just a quick announcement for members of the Airport Authority while we're sitting here in our meeting. I had a nice conversation with Mayor Bagwell a couple of weeks back about using these iPads that are up here. She has offered to instruct us how to use them. Stan, I know you know how to use yours. She made the suggestion that, you know, it would help our meetings a lot. And so I'm going to be getting with her sometime in the next few weeks to get a kind of a learning process from her.
Nothing mystic about it. You just hit the voting.
Ah-ha, okay.
On two, three, four votes.
Okay, well, I guess the results were about raising hands for comments. So I think on our next meeting, we're going to go over to this system after I get the opportunity to visit with her and can get a tutorial from her. She said she'd teach me how to do it, and we're going to go to this system since we have that technology available to us.
Since I've already messed up and made a motion, I moved that that's a good idea.
Yeah, exactly. Guys like us aren't too smart on that, right? So, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes of the past meetings of the Airport Authority. Has everyone had the opportunity to review those minutes?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. So we had the draft minutes of the 28th. And then the draft minutes of June 16th. Does anyone have any comments in those minutes? Anyone? Yes, Stan. Okay, you're going to move to approve the minutes of both June 16th and June 28th. Is that correct?
I moved to approve the minutes of 16 June and 28 June.
Okay. Motion, we have a second to approve those minutes.
Second?
Okay. Motion and second to approve minutes of the June 16th regular meeting and the June 28th special meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Modification of the agenda. I don't foresee any reason to modify this evening's agenda, so we will move on to public comment. During this time, members of the public who wish to address the Airport Authority can speak on any agendized and non-agendized matters related to the airport. Your comments are limited to three minutes per person. If your item requires extended discussion, you're going to have to speak with me to calendar a matter for a future Airport Authority meeting. This is not an interrogatory, and there are no personal attacks during public comment. So with that in mind, if anyone would like to provide public comment, now would be a good time. You can approach podium. Yes, sir. Please announce your name, full name, where you are from, anywhere you want, and you can turn a microphone on by pressing the little green button. And again, you have three minutes to provide public comment. It should be dead center. There you go. It's all yours.
My name is Travis. I'm from Carson City, and I was applying for a Class II FBO at the airport here, ran to a bunch of problems. Steve Takeus over here did a little bit of research, and I've, you know, gave me a list of things I had to remedy, which I did. I was supposed to be on this past meeting, this last month, this meeting today. Wasn't put on the agenda again because I'm not able to lease any office space at this airport. Problem is, Michael Golden here says what I'm trying to do is not compatible with what his FBO is. However, there are other airplanes that are parked over there, airplanes that are not in use. There's no problem, you know, doing what I want to do. The issue is at this point is that I'm not able to rent any space at the airport, and that's a big problem for me. And the reason I'm not able to rent any space at the airport is because, you remember, Paul Hamilton has gone around the airport and defamed me. He's basically told everybody that he has a non-compete agreement with me. Told you this in conversation. He asked you not to rent me an office. I know that for fact. I've spoken to Ken Moen about this. It's ridiculous to me that I'm in a place where I have to go against board members who are here for their own personal interest. And that's what you're doing right now, is your own personal interest. On March 6th, I receive a phone call threatening me. This is three weeks after my wife passed away from pancreatic cancer, threatening me. A board member threatening me, which is unbelievable. I don't understand it, you know? You say you have a non-compete agreement, nobody has seen it yet, all right? So you're defaming me to everybody on the airport, on the board, across the airport. We had a conversation in January about this, and you go on and on. And I even hear now that I'm being told that you're saying that I've threatened to kill you. You're on the airport board. You know, I'm trying to apply for a business, and at this point, I'm trying to apply as a Class V FBO. And there's nothing in Title 19 that says that I can't apply as a Class V FBO with no location, that I can use the main terminal building, just like, you know, a couple of other people use. They go walk through the main terminal building, they do the business, and they get out. What I need to do is a Part 61 Flight Instruction operation. I'm a flight instructor. I don't need an office. And being that I can't get an office anymore because Paul has spoken to everybody at the airport, and it's impossible for me to get an office, Class V FBO is the way I want to apply next month, okay? So I'm giving you guys a heads up. I would like to be on the agenda for next month as a Class V, if you cannot take me off the agenda. I've met all the insurance requirements. I have a CPA financial statement. I have all the qualifications to do what I'm asking, yet I can't be given any space at this airport because one of your board members is, for his own personal interest, running me out the door. It's unbelievable that this is a government operation. This is what's happening here. I've spoken to Lori Bagwell multiple times. Attorney General is now involved. There's a big complaint with the Attorney General. It's going through. Five ethics charges, okay, with the state, all right? Everybody's been deposed at this point, I believe. This is going to go through pretty quickly. You're going to get really bad results from this one. When I get done with this, there's going to be a civil lawsuit involved, and after that, if I have no resolution, we're going Part 13, Complaint with the FAA. Now, if you guys don't know what that is, Steve Takeus can explain it to you.
You've more than expended your three minutes. Respectfully, I have to ask you to end your comment. However, I'm happy to, as I mentioned in my correspondence to you, happy to speak with you offline. Again, this is not an interrogatory situation.
I appreciate your time.
Happy to talk to you anytime outside the public meeting about your grievance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
For clarification, what's the difference between a Class V and a Class II?
I'm going to let Mr. Takeus respond to that, and I'll also remind everyone here, we're not supposed to be discussing anything we've received from public comments. Maybe it would be appropriate to address that after the meeting.
Yeah, I can address that question and any other questions you want to direct to me.
I'm sorry about that, Stan.
I just wanted to differ. I'll find out later.
Any other public comment at this time? You had more than your three minutes, sir. Please.
I'm asking for resignation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Again, I've got to play by the rules. That's all I'm here to do, okay? Would anyone else like to provide any public comment at this time?
We do have a couple callers on the line.
Okay, go ahead.
Caller, when you hear the two beeps, it'll be your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record. We'll be taking the next caller. Caller, when you hear the two beeps, please state your name for the record. It'll be your turn for public comment.
Yes, this is Bradley Harris. I'm a past member of the Airport Authority Board of Trustees. I have two points to make. First, the first is technical. These are both regarding the Item 1, regarding the violation of the Open Meeting Act. The first one that I want to talk about is just the employment offer, and I just want to offer some help to, this is a technical point, and I hope that we can clear it up. Regarding the plan to use the 100% employee pay program for the first contributions, let me explain quickly. Normally, the employee pays 15 and 1/2% and the employer pays the same. Under the employer pay program, the employer pays about 30%. To do that, to be able to do that, you have to have a salary reduction agreement in place. That's per the PERS document and the plan document. The employee's salary is multiplied by a factor to determine the reduction in pay, and the current reduction is about, it's about 13% for regular members, and Corey would be a regular member. These agreements aren't optional. They're in the law. You have to have a reduction agreement in place. You need to rewrite the employment agreement so that Corey understands what has to happen here. And if you plan to increase the salary to take this into account, you will need to agendize the new agreement, publish it, and vote on it. So, and I strongly suggest that you increase the salary to take this into account because I'm sure he did not have that in mind. Secondly, my second point is purely an opinion. I think it's disingenuous to say that this action is to broadly consider all applicants with a staff consideration to confirm approval of the job offer to Mr. Jenkins. To call this broadly considering, it takes hours and hours to properly review and screen applicants. On top of that, the board has not interviewed any applicants, not even Mr. Jenkins. I don't think a poorly executed board action can be fixed with this little maneuver. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
We'll be taking the next caller. Caller, when you hear the two beeps, it'll be your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record. Caller, are you there?
Okay, any other public comment?
There are no further callers on the line.
Fair enough. With that in mind, we're going to close public comment at this time. We're going to move on to our public hearings this evening. First one is for discussion of possible action to correct an alleged violation of the Open Meeting Law, posting requirement and claim of inadequate description of action, formally consider all applicants for Carson City Airport manager position, confirm the job offer as Carson City Airport manager offered to Corey Jenkins. Mr. Takeus, this one's all yours. Take it away.
Yes, so we did have an open meeting law complaint filed against the authority by someone who's dissatisfied with the manner in which the hiring was conducted, and complaining about the meeting in which the board took the next step, which was to go ahead and make an offer instead of having a social event and board interviews, and also the event that we had at the terminal building where we confirmed that offer. Now, I did notify you at the time of the terminal building, although the video, the audio track is difficult to hear, but I did advise you that everything was in front of you at that meeting, and you had the full ability and right to make any decision you want, including talk to other candidates, hold additional meetings, do whatever you'd like to do, and the board voted. The one discrepancy that I see in the complaint that we're not able to determine whether or not it was an open meeting violation is the law requires that we publish notice of our meetings on the state's notice webpage. And as soon as the meeting goes by, those are taken off the state's webpage, so there's no way to go back in time and determine whether or not we complied with that requirement. The Open Meeting Law has a statute saying to address this kind of situation, and it says, look, if you think you may have made a mistake, or you actually did make a mistake, you can simply cure it by taking corrective action and by noticing it the way we have in our agenda, which is a notice to take corrective action. So, the matter is back before you on the hiring offer with Mr. Jenkins. You have before you and have already looked at all 10 resumes that were provided in response to the request for resumes, the questions that were asked by the interview panel, which was made up of some of you, and by the tenant representatives, or at least one of them, I'm not sure if both of them were at them, I wasn't there, but, and you have the results of their recommendations, although their recommendations, of course, are not binding on you. You're the hiring body. And so if you have any reluctance, you can simply go back and we can start the process over in some way, or you can proceed to vote to confirm the action that you've taken in making the job offer. One additional tidbit is that, is that the, when the job offer was made to Mr. Jenkins, it was made to him with the discussion about employer-paid PERS, and he confirmed that to us, and when he noticed it wasn't in the contract, or we noticed, I'm not sure whether it was Tim that noticed or it was Corey, that was pointed out. And so we've clarified that in some emails going back and forth. It is not, as Mr. Harris would have you believe, something that we have to go in and now reduce his salary. That doesn't even make sense. The offer to him was the salary with employer-paid. And so if there's some kind of calculation that has to be made, and I've never heard the rule that he's referring to, it may be, I just don't know, if there's some calculation that would be made, it was implicitly made when we offered him a salary with employer-paid. And so that, to me, is a non-issue. But in confirming your hiring of him tonight, it includes confirming that issue, which has now been clarified. And I'm available to answer any questions. But at this point, I think if you have additional discussion, you have discussion. If you want to just move to a vote, you can move to a vote.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Appreciate your input. If any members of the Airport Authority have any questions for our legal counsel regarding this matter, now would be the appropriate time, as I understand it, Steve, this is just a ratification of a prior action taken by the Airport Authority.
Well, it is. You're taking the action over, and the staff recommendation, and we do have staff members, contrary to the complainant's statements, are recommending that you go ahead and confirm your hiring of Corey Jenkins as the airport manager on the terms that you have agreed to already, or he has agreed to.
Okay, thank you. Let me go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, quick comment, Tim Pulitz. This omission of the PERS benefit to the employment agreement actually goes way back. Goes back about four years when former member Harris provided a hiring contract and agreement with the previous airport manager, and they failed to include the PERS as part of the benefit package in that offer of employment. It was recognized then, apparently, and he was able to receive his PERS benefits as were offered by the Airport Authority at that time. So when we were trying to just keep the consistent letter and offerings from employer, employee-to-employee, we used the same verbiage that we thought that was sound. So we determined that there was an error four years ago. There was an error when we actually offered a new contract to our previous airport manager that he chose not to take, and there was an error with Corey Jenkins. So we've all admitted it. We're capable of having errors happening, but it was always discussed from day one that the PERS, the employee-paid PERS was going to be part of his package, because we even went in to determine he's currently in a PERS program with the city of Boulder. So it was always in the, always upfront, and it was never, it was never a dispute, just an omission on the actual paperwork. So I think we all understand that at this point.
Yeah, for the record, our prior airport manager did not have that language of PERS contribution in his employment agreement, and we caught this after the fact, even though we had intended and represented to Corey Jenkins that, you know, he would be participating in the PERS program with contribution from the Airport Authority. We just neglected to catch it prior to issuing the document to him. So it was a clerical error. We take responsibility. I take responsibility for my actions. I drafted the agreement with review from counsel and from a member Pulitz as our interim acting manager. So if anything, this is an appropriate time to correct that error. And I also want to point out, for the record, we did hear, you know, a public comment about this, and there was a complaint filed with the Ethics Commission regarding an open meeting law violation on this particular matter. I want to point out for the record, and I reference our minutes that we just approved of June 16th, 2021, the records so indicate that on this particular matter, the complainant voted in favor of offering Mr. Jenkins this position. So the complainant of the open meeting law violation actually impugned himself because he voted for that action, and now's the time to clean it up, I reckon. Yes, sir. Carl.
So a question, I guess, for counsel on this matter, just as I'm thinking about what could potentially be a motion. Should we move to do so, and my personal opinion is it would be the right idea, to repeat the decision or make the same decision as we made at our previous meeting? I think you made a very good point of two extra I think you made a very good point of two extra things that it sounded like should be in that motion. One being to call attention to the correction of the employment agreement to include employer paid PERS. The second seems to me, in light of the public comment, and I have no way of validating whether the commenter's interpretation of state law is correct or incorrect. Should there be mention in that motion that the salary offered is net of any corrections that might be applicable? Should there be some provision in the PERS plan to require that? I mean, would that be prudent?
Yeah, I think that would be prudent. I mean, we, what we want to do is stick with what he agreed to and what we offered him. And that includes that PERS coverage. So if there's some calculation, yeah, we should make it clear that our agreement with him is net of that. And again, you have the option to do whatever you want on this item. You don't have to confirm your, your employment with Mr. Jenkins. However, that is the recommendation of the staff.
Any other comments from members of the Airport Authority or questions for our counsel on this matter? If not, the motion that is being proposed is to approve and confirm the employment offer to Corey Jenkins, including the clarification of employer contribution towards PERS coverage. So would anyone like to make that motion at this time?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking, I'm sorry, just trying to find that draft, that draft motion there, because I know one was written. Yeah.
It's on the board memo.
Why I can't find it in the, there we are. So I move to approve and confirm the employment offer previously made to Corey Jenkins for the position of Carson City Airport Manager, including the correction to that agreement to include clarification on employer paid PERS coverage. And further to affirm that the salary specified in that agreement is net of any PERS-related calculations, corrections, downward adjustments, what have you, that might be required by state law or by the PERS plan. And that that value is Mr. Jenkins' net salary that will show up in his, in his gross earnings in his paycheck.
Thank you, Carl. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve and confirm the employment offer to Corey Jenkins, including the clarification of PERS coverage. And his salary would be, of course, net of that coverage. The coverage is a benefit under our employment agreement with Mr. Jenkins. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks. We will move on to item number two. Steve, we are really tasking you this evening. This is an action to approve and modify the red line of the cooperative agreement between the Carson City Airport Authority and the municipality of Carson City, directing staff to send the red line version to Carson City. This follows from discussions of the Airport Authority at our May 19th meeting, in which additional direction was given as to the cooperative agreement, which expires November 17th of this year. Let me give a little background on this. We created a subcommittee, myself, Member Hutter and Member Rogers. We convened with our counsel, Steve Takis, at Steve's office earlier this month. And we had a lengthy discussion as to what we could and could not do with this cooperative agreement, what we felt was best for the airport. And Steve, take it away.
So this, this actually follows from a 1989 agreement. The Airport Authority was formed in 1989 by the Nevada Legislature as a separate subdivision of the state of Nevada. So we're really separate from the city, but we are in, within the city. That original law concluded a sharing of duties between the city and the airport. And basically had the airport doing all the management and taking all the, the Airport Authority, excuse me, taking all the management and duties and, and operations of the airport. But it left the city in play on approval of leases, approval of certain kinds of contracts, approval if there was ever any land to be disposed from the airport. In other words, change from airport to non-airport, or land coming in that was being enlarged to the airport. The, the legislation was believed at the time by the Airport Authority to be a good model to, to move forward. We were subsequently notified by the Solicitor General of the United States that in their review, because it had taxing authority, the Airport Authority had taxing authority, but it could only tax with the permission of the Board of Supervisors, the attorney at the time concluded that only the city could be a grant sponsor. And the FAA grants are a very important aspect of the airport operation, as you all know. And so at that point, the city and the Airport Authority put their heads together and said, look, let's do, do a cooperative agreement so we can still spell out the sharing of responsibilities. But we won't transfer the land to the Airport Authority, which is one of the things that the law required. And we won't transfer other duties. We'll continue to have the city be the grant sponsor to receive the funds because the city has the taxing authority. And the logic behind that was that if you have taxing authority and you accept money from the federal government, the federal government, it feels safe that you will always be able to meet your match. That's really what it's about, your 6% match. And, and so we moved forward on that basis. We made a 20-year agreement back on May 17th of 1989 that expired on May 17th of whatever, 2019, I guess. We, we did an extension to the agreement, so we had time to figure out, okay, where do we need to go with this? It kind of bounced around between different people. I, I was not very involved, but it bounced around. We put it in the hands of our former airport manager, and it bounced around a little bit, and it wasn't getting closure. They came back and said, look, we need to extend it again. And so we extended it, I can't remember, a second time. And then low and behold, it was apparent to us, it still wasn't going to get done in time. So we extended it until November 17th of this year. So what did we do? The old agreement had lots of provisions in it about transfer this piece of equipment, transfer this account. These are all things that are ancient history, and there's no reason for them to be in an ongoing or renewed agreement. And I think when the DA's office looked at it, Dan Yu is a very sharp attorney there. He looked at it and said, okay, it's kind of dumb to try and take this and turn this into a renewed agreement. So he started drafting somewhat from scratch, you know, following the same terms, but a drafter from scratch. And I think he did a very good job of a base agreement. However, when I went through it, I found certain sections which had not been updated for changes in NRS 844, which is the Airport Act, which I wouldn't have expected the DA's office to have great familiarity with, and a variety of other smaller changes. Plus, the other thing is, we have a history with the city in which we have done certain things, and the city has done certain things, and we've reduced those agreements to paper. For example, there was land on the east end of the airport in the area that's now the Rock Quarry. And that land was actually owned by an adjacent landowner. It was owned by John Serpa. And the Airport Advisory Committee at the time wanted to acquire that land for a safety area. And that was consistent with what the FAA was urging them to do. So the city went ahead and purchased the land from Mr. Serpa over a period of years with a promissory note. We, as the Airport Authority, said, hey, look, it's really part of our responsibility. We'll take over payments on the notes. But in line with this division of responsibilities, we need the city to transfer to us the real property taxes on the hangars, the improvements on property on the airport, and the personal property taxes on the aircraft. Because, well, in addition to that, there's a federal law that said they had to do it, but it was just the right and fair thing to do. And so we, what I did in this agreement is I cited to that agreement so that it doesn't get lost in the weeds. We know that we have an agreement. We're still both going to honor it. In addition, there was a law, a state law, that previously sent some of the aviation fuel taxes in different places. And one of the places, you know, not bad places, one of the places was the Civil Air Patrol. They used it as part of their funding. However, the federal law prohibits that. The federal law says that any fuel taxes that are collected as a result of fuel sales on the airport must come back to the airport. Now, recognizing that it doesn't come back 100% when taxes get, get assessed. For example, real property tax is an easy one to think about. The bulk of that ends up in an education fund. It doesn't get back to the city. It gets to, goes to the state education fund. A similar thing apparently happens with fuel taxes. I'm not an expert on fuel taxes by any means. And so when that happened, the state Nevada Department of Transportation Aviation Division, together with the Nevada Airports Association, and I had a little bit of a hand in it, drafted some legislation to fix the Nevada state law so we were not in conflict with the federal law. Some similar things happened in a whole variety of states because what the FAA had done is they said, hey, guys, we're seeing a bunch of laws here where the money's not going back to the airport. The money generated on the airport's not going back. And, and, and they had a lot of success in getting states to change their laws. Well, when that happened, that meant the fuel taxes, or at least the portion that the city would otherwise get from the aviation fuel taxes, come back to the city. So those are referenced in the red line. Those were additions. We made a number of other changes to it. One that I want to point out to you that we didn't make, but I just want to point it out to you because after meeting with, with Carl and, and Michael and John, I think they're right on, is they put a five-year term in the agreement. And I think that's probably appropriate. You know, I, when I first redlined it, I said, oh, let's make it another 20 years. I don't want to be doing this again in five years or four years. It's taken us three years or two years to get to this point. And, but I think the five years makes sense. And part of it is, our agreement with the city has always been, they will continue to manage the grant funds until or unless the Airport Authority is recognized as a grant sponsor. When our last airport manager was here, I worked with him on that issue with the FAA because he had pointed out that other airports, which are airport authorities, like the Reno Tahoe Airport, don't have direct taxing authority. But the FAA has decided that's, that's not required anymore for them to be a grant recipient, a grant sponsor. And so our discussions early on with the city were, okay, well, let's move in this direction so that the city's finance office doesn't have to do this anymore for us. And the original plan was we would take steps to get there. And what, what I had discussed with Mike Williams, the FAA's manager of their airport's district office, the person that we talked to at the FAA, is, well, the first step would be to be co-sponsors of the grant, the city and Carson City. That way, the city can continue to pull the money in until they're satisfied the Airport Authority has a sufficient mechanism in place. And then if that all goes well, the next step would be to just move it to the Airport Authority. And in that respect, we're leaving the city of one more duty that I'm sure that they have better things to do. And so the five years probably makes sense because if we continue to move down that path, who knows, that may work out just fine for the transition. And if the transition doesn't work out and we need to renew it, at this point, the model that we've rebuilt, you know, this red line model, would work well as a renewed agreement as well. And by the way, the, the terms of the agreement don't say that it just automatically expires in five years. It actually says it's renewed year to year after that. But it's that five-year term that kind of gives us a window and a kind of a target for let's get things done. Beyond that, there are a number of other red lines in there. I'm happy to answer any questions about them. Most of them are kind of obvious on the insurance. We had taken this agreement and the insurance requirements back to our insurance consultant. And he was quick to point out, you know, you've got more insurance than they're requiring, and you should have the more insurance than they're requiring. You should correct that number in the agreement to show that we've got 10 million of coverage, not 1 million of coverage. And then he had a variety of other insurance adjustments, which for the most part are all complimentary of, of our arrangement with the city. I mean, they, they basically say both of us will be better insured than, than the minimum levels. But yeah, I can answer any questions you have. But beyond that, at this point, I think it's ready for you guys to vote to authorize me to send it to the district attorney. I've been sending him intermediate drafts on an informal basis because he's a bright guy, and I like the feedback I get from him. It's really good. And so at this point, it would be official that this is the version that we're sending to him. And that way, he can go through it, and he just got back into town. I think he was on vacation or something last week. And he said that he would dig into this as soon as we approved it. And then he can present it to the city, or he can get back to us if he sees there's a problem that we need to fix. But because our deadline is November 17th, and I really do not want to be the person saying we need to do another extension, I think it's good for us to get this approved and get that all moving so that if there are a couple of different iterations that have to occur, they can happen before the deadline.
Thank you, Steve. Now would be the time, I trust everybody has read through this and has a good understanding of it. Now would be the time for anyone who has a comment or a question regarding this matter to air that amongst us as a group. If not, the right thing to do would be, we'll get there. Right thing to do would be to send this back to Steve and let him send it over to his counterparts in the DA's office. So Stan, go ahead.
I had one comment, or one opportunity to talk to the mayor about it, and she was just asking for input. And I'm happy to see that we went the five-year route. There's too many changes that occurred federally and by law that I think would mandate us to be in a lot more work. And I think, like Steve said, the next five years, maybe the city will relinquish some more. And maybe they won't. I don't know. But I, I think five years is appropriate now.
Okay, thank you, Stan. Paul, any comments or questions?
I guess up, up to this point, we've not really been able to qualify as a grant sponsor. And I guess if we were, were able to qualify as a grant sponsor, then, then the city would, I guess, deed the land back to, or to us as a airport board. Is that, is that correct?
Well, that's, that's what the law provides, but it talks about a transition agreement with the city. And so my expectation is if we get to that, or if we, or when we get to that point where we're accepted as the 100% grant sponsor, then we would talk to the city about what's a logical way to transit, transition the property ownership. And then if we do transition the property ownership, it does solve some other problems for the airport. We are still part of the Carson City municipal area. We're not, you know, it's not the republic of the Airport Authority, which I think the, one of the, the past members of the Board of Supervisors used to always rib me. But we're still within the airport city. We still rely on the city. We still help the city whenever we can. The city still helps us whenever we can, whenever they can. Good examples are the city needed an easement for a sewer line. We said, great, you got it. And we let them put it right down the front of the airport. I mean, those kinds of things I would hope would always continue to go on. But yeah, there'll be some kind of transition of the land eventually.
Okay, and so that's clearly, clearly documented in here that we can do that transition if we do become a grant sponsor.
Well, that's not, that's not in the co-op agreement per se, but that is in the law. That is in the NRS 844, that there was supposed to be a transfer of all properties. And so, but it also says, the city and the airport shall enter into an agreement for the transfer of, of properties. And so my expectation is there'll be some additional issues to address with that. It's not automatic. That's correct.
Tim, any comments?
Just a brief comment. I've had a chance to get a little debrief, debrief from this discussion from our counsel Takis and Member Rogers and Hutter. And after reviewing their recap in the red line, I'm fully supportive. I trust that we're going in the right direction. And it's been a lot of work. We have a lot more to go. Thank you.
Carl, any comments, questions?
I, I would just make one, and that is, you know, to, to, to complement the work that counsel Takis did in working to create the red line that Council Takers did in working to create the red line that we started with for that working session. I came into that session, you know, with, with my eye on, on one thing in particular and found myself very satisfied. And I, I'll just call attention to it again here. It's the section, well, I think it's 6H. Yeah, it is 6H. That, that, as Steve very nicely just spoke to, clarifying the city's continued to transfer, continuance of transfer to the airport authority, those fuel tax and personal property revenues. And, you know, it was important in my mind that this be in the cooperative agreement to call attention to a collection of things under NRS, under federal law, also under a couple of Board of Supervisors ratified decisions and memorandums of understanding between the airport and the city. And to collect those all up, have them actually memorialized and referenced in here, I think was a very, very key add to this. So I just call specific attention to that. Makes, makes me feel good, especially because it concerns our revenue. And that's always something you want to have your finger on.
I think the appropriate course of action would be to move the ball down the field on this and authorize our counsel to send this on to the DA's office and get going on further negotiations with the city of Carson City.
Well, I so moved to approve the red line and authorize counsel to send it to Carson City.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second. I second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the red line version of the cooperative agreement that's before us this evening and authorize our legal counsel to send it to the municipality of Carson City. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, discussion and possible action. We're going to review a initial request from Carson Tahoe Executive for leased property. Parcel one being described as the unleased parcel of approximately 12 acres east of Taxiway Bravo, north of the self-serve fuel island, south of the Correio hangar, and west of the airport fence line. Parcel two, the unleased parcel of approximately 20 acres between Taxiway Charlie and Taxiway Delta, west of the Jet Ranch, and the Carson Executive Hangar Association and Carson Air Group leaseholds, also referred to as Triangle Property. There is a request to begin the lease process and determination of whether to proceed with appraisals. I'm going to let Counselor Takers explain NRS Section 244 here, but before I do that, just a note, I spoke with the applicant at length yesterday and spoke with James Pickett in great depth about this. He is unfortunately and regrettably unable to be with us this evening. Had to pick up his child from the airport, who's a minor, so he had to meet his child at the gate at about 6 o'clock in Reno. And he is really apologetic, but committed to, you know, working with us and communicating with us. I know he's been talking to Carl, and we've provided him with a significant amount of information. And I told him that we would, you know, continue to move this in the right direction. So Steve, take it away.
Well, we have the request from Carson Tahoe Executive, and I think, I really think what you should do is hear from them as to what their plans are and what they're proposing. There, the funny thing that happened is when Brad called me and said, okay, how do we describe this for our letter? I told him it was okay to describe it in the general terms that are exactly in this letter, which is basically we're talking about the area between, you know, Taxiway Delta and Taxiway Charlie. That's west of, you know, the Jet Ranch and the Carson Executive Hangars and the Carson Air Group. But to actually go forward at some point, we do need to have a precise description of the area being leased. And I don't know whether that will require like a survey or a record survey map, but the starting point is usually, what is the plan and how would you break it up so that you can break it up and do that all in one, in one move? And so my advice to you is, is listen to whatever the plans are. And if you do want to go forward, because I didn't want him to have to wait, I didn't want them to have to wait on a survey or something or that determination. If you want to go forward, then the next step would be identify those areas. And when people talk about legal descriptions, they think, oh, that must be something I get from a lawyer. It's really not. Legal descriptions are usually what you get from the engineers or the surveyors because they're the ones who go out there and look for the found points and give you the meets and bounds description. Or if it's, they do a record of survey map where they actually identify the parcels and they record that map with all the details of where the borders are. And so that, that piece should occur. In terms of NRS 244, I think that discussion should be had after, you know, what you're looking at, you know, what's being proposed, because it's different depending on what use it's being put to. So for example, we have some shortcuts if it's aircraft storage only, whereas if you're doing full FBO services, those shortcuts are not available to us under the statute. There's a kind of a standard process that we used for all leases until we found a shortcut for aircraft storage, which is that you get an appraisal, you identify the property, you get an appraisal that's tied to that property, the appraisal has to be current within six months. And then you adopt a resolution saying, okay, we've decided we're going to go ahead and put this out to lease. You pick a deadline for sealed bids, you publish that notice in the paper, you accept the sealed bids, and you also give them minimum terms. We usually would give them a model lease or something so they know what we're talking about. You have this deadline where they have to submit sealed bids. You have the sealed bids deadline coincide with an, an airport authority meeting so that you can open the bids at the meeting. If there's only one bid and the bid meets all the criteria of the resolution, you can go ahead and accept the bid. If there's more than one bid, the statute says that you basically have kind of an auction or a bidding war. And that has happened to us in the past where we've had multiple parties come in and they just keep bidding more, more cents per square foot until one of them drops out, and now you have a fair price because you have what the market will bear. And so in a big picture, that's how the process works. But I can drill down to any level of, I've been through this process so many times, I can drill down to any level. I did include in your briefing packet a sample of what the resolution looks like. And oddly enough, it was a resolution on the interior triangle area that we did like in 2009 or something. And the appraised price was higher, for some reason, the appraised price in 2009 was high. And I think it was because the airport was not, you know, when the real estate market fell apart in the, you know, the latter part of the, that first decade of 2000, the real, the airport somehow was behind the curve. We didn't catch up. Things fell apart outside of the airport before they fell apart here. And so that appraised price was actually 50 cents a square foot, which I rather doubt any appraiser's going to come back to us and tell us that, you know? A higher price, you know, not 50 cents, but I think a higher price would probably come in on the airport property on the front of the airport. But based on the appraisals we've seen from various different appraisers over the years, I just don't think it's going to come out that high there. But I give that to you as an example because you can look at it, you can see, okay, here's the language we put in our resolution. Here are the minimum turns. We're very clear on the fact that the airport can only, under the law, accept a bid that is at least as much as the appraised lease value. You can't come in and, we can't cut a deal and do it below that price. So I'll stop talking so that the smart and effective people from CTE can talk.
Well, we're going to let them do that in a moment to help this process along. I know Carl wants to discuss something here, but also the proposal is for dry hangar storage. It's not for any FBO services. So.
Well, I think that that's probably what we want to hear from them.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's what I was told by Mr. Pickett. So, but understood.
That's helpful to know.
Right.
Because it goes in different directions, but I didn't want to tie, I didn't want to eliminate what it is.
Sure. Carl, you wanted to.
Well, no, I mean.
You've been working with.
So I was going to, you know, simply add a little color based on the understanding from the conversations I've had as kind of, you know, point man with the CTE group and some great conversations I've had with, with Brad and with, with James in helping to understand some of the development ideas and some really pretty bold and exciting development ideas for some of these leased parcels as well as fee simple parcels that, that group owns. And tonight, we're here to talk about, you know, the proposed lease piece. Now, I'm not going to intend to speak with more clarity than the folks who actually have the plans in their heads could, but I did just want to clarify that from my conversations, my understanding broadly is that the center triangle development would be, would be, what do you say, dry, dry storage or aircraft storage, whereas the north-south strip would potentially have a greater diversity of uses. And so I, that was just the clarification that I wanted to add from my understanding so far. But there are people who can speak to that far better than I.
Chair Golden just went to the restroom. Anybody else want to make a comment before we ask a rep? Oh, here comes Michael now. Michael, Brad, Carl just completed his, his comments, and we'll turn it back over to you.
Fantastic. Thanks, Tim. So at this point, I know Mr. Cost is here representing the applicant. Was there anything you'd like to add to the conversation this evening?
Yeah, I mean, I can add as much as you can, Mr. Chair. It's a lot of questions.
Yeah, now would be the time. You got to come on up, introduce yourself.
Chair Golden, Counselor Takers.
Push the button, please. It's on, actually. I see it's green.
Can everybody hear me okay? Do I really need this?
Yes, please, because it's being recorded. Push it again, though. See, it's red. Now it's green. Perfect. There you go, sir.
All right. Well, it's great to see everyone, and I'm here to try and answer and clarify any questions or concerns that you may have in reference to the letter that was put forth by James for the lease of the property. Carl, if I could start by just answering your first question that you had. When we originally had set out on this, we were thinking about MROs and commercial activity on that 12-acre parcel. We do not have anybody that is lined up. We don't have tenants. We don't, there's no immediate need for that right now. So we'd like to proceed with just dry storage only in both locations. That's what we're looking for, for right now. If the opportunity presents itself down the road and the infrastructure's in place, the zoning may change or whatever, not for that land, then we can explore, try to market and sell some of those opportunities. But for right now, the specific demand that we have and what we're here to ask for is for dry storage only. That's what we're looking for.
So maybe, and just while we're on that subject, I'll bounce it over a question to counsel. What in our lease process, given the different path for dry storage versus for properties that have other commercial activities, maintenance, MRO, FBO, FBO-type things, the flexibility that Mr. Cost speaks of there, how would we want to, how would we do things or if we can do them so we don't paint into a corner that way?
Yeah. And that's, that's, that's a good question, and it's a good concern. When we get property appraised, the use of the property comes into play. And this is a little bit different than some of the other airports in the area. Well, some of the airports do it this way, some of them do it a different way. You know, some airports just appraise the property for any use whatsoever. And Minden's a good example. You lease a lot in, at the Minden Airport, you can use, use it for just aircraft storage, or you can actually operate an aircraft repairer or maintenance facility from it. You can do typical FBO services. What we have done at this airport, in part because we have a master plan where we try intelligently look at what things will fit where, when we get the appraisals, we include in the appraisal what use it's going to be put forth. And in the past, our appraisals have reflected that. And certainly, property is worth more if you can do more things on it. It's worth a little less if you can only store aircraft. And so if you got down the road and said, okay, now we want to change the use, it does introduce a kind of a difficult problem because what we would have to do then is do some kind of recalculation of the fair market value tied to doing a broader set of services. The safest thing to do, I would think, from a business standpoint, would be get the broader ability to do it upfront so that you're not restricted. Now, that might mean you're paying a little bit more if you're using it for aircraft-only storage, but I don't, I don't know that the delta is so large. I mean, in the leases that, lease appraisals that we've seen. And so that's kind of how it fits in there. Did that answer the question?
It answered, it answered my question. Mine's not probably the important one, if it answered Mr. Cost's question.
Well, I think that clearly we would like to have the pathway to be able to use the land for different purposes. And that 12-acre park, parcel specifically, should it be zoned properly? Should it be the type of activities meet all of the minimum standards and all of the requirements of the airport, the bylaws? Down the road, you just, I don't want to paint everything into a corner where we're not going to be able to do anything there other than dry storage. For right now, the demand we have for is for dry storage. And quite frankly, after looking at the ALP that you have, you guys have done an exceptional job in marking out where the buildings are, putting GA in certain areas and commercial buildings, not commercial buildings, but larger buildings in some other areas. And we really would like to follow along with that plan that has already been considered because one of the things that we see, and I think, Michael, obviously you know that, you know this yourself, we have a waiting list now of 75 smaller aircraft up at Reno. And that list grows, five airplanes a week almost, for people that are looking for T-hangers. These are smaller VLJ-type aircraft, Vision jets, to Cirrus aircraft, to regular just piston airplanes. So that, this whole pent-up demand is not just Reno, it's Carson, it's Minden, it's growing into Stead now. So what we'd like to do is develop kind of a, a mixed plan that would compartmentalize and put the GA aircraft into a certain area where the tenants would have their own facilities and they'd be able to operate out of, and would kind of keep the GA folks happy. Put some hangars that may store multiple aircraft for the people that are a little bit more thrifty, that don't want to pay for their own hangar, that may want to go into a community-type hangar situation, but get their aircraft out of the elements. So that would be the storage aircraft in, in the triangle area that we're talking about. And then on the other parcel, on the 10 to 12-acre parcel, we'd like to have a little bit larger capability to store some larger aircraft because we feel that area alongside with the other CTE development that would be going on, on the through-the-fence type stuff, we'll get that in the future, would all put those type of aircraft in one area in the airport. So we think by compartmentalizing things and putting like aircraft in certain areas, it would help with the long-range plans for the airport itself. But one of the things that's really important for us is to understand the biggest need that we see at the Carson Airport right now is not for a bunch of big jet hangars. That's not what we see. We're not trying to turn it into, to that. What we're looking for is, there is a very big pent-up demand at the airport for general aviation-type aircraft, sport aircraft, light jets, slight business-type jets becoming into and out of the airport. And as the airport grows and the infrastructure at the airport improves, which you guys are all working on diligently, there will be a coming time where there will be a need for the larger aircraft hangars. Some of that stuff through the business park and the industrial side of things that we're planning on doing on the other side, those will be businesses that may have an aircraft that will be operating. But we also need to be able to house those aircraft, and that's where those people, those aircraft would go on that 12-acre parcel as people want to move airplanes and move to Carson to base their aircraft. These would be community hangars to put the jets into on the 12-acre parcel. So again, I went from one to the other, but the triangle is more of a GA-type activity, what we see, VLJ, sport market. And then on the 12-acre parcel, that would be larger hangars that would be able to accommodate larger aircraft. And that way, the airport can plan for. And that way, the airport can plan for infrastructure to get to and from those areas. We can look at roadways for vehicle traffic to get to and from those areas in an effort to try and meet all of the safety and the needs of the airport itself to try and get some of the vehicle traffic off of the taxiways. This is the best plan that we think we can put forward and ironically, it was already thought of by you guys. So it's already your plan, it's on paper and we're, it's very similar to what we would like to do. We just have the capital and the resources and we'd like to invest the money to do it.
Let me make a couple of comments as
Sure.
in between this here, because there's, there's two things that stand out. One, in this letter, that I think we all need to hear as an airport authority. And another, based on your comment, because, you know, it's, it's a little bit contradiction of terms based on what I've previously heard. If you want that flexibility, as you refer to it, to use the land for other than dry aircraft storage, forget about the economics of it for a minute. Let me go back to the Nevada revised statute 244. That is a completely different process. We can't just lease you the land with an appraisal. As our counsel pointed out, that goes into a bid process, advertisement of bid. Steve, if you'd like to clarify again on that particular matter. So if, if we were doing a commercial use, we can't just lease the land with an appraisal?
That's correct. 244 has the resolution and the published notice and the multiple bidder aspect to it. But if I'm understanding Mr. Cost correctly, it sounds like he's describing aircraft storage in both areas, but the 12-acre, whatever the acreage is next to Taxway Bravo would be, he would like to have more flexibility in use. So maybe that one goes through the bid process of 244. But the other areas in the triangle, that, to me, if we could identify the areas precisely and then have an appraisal that's tied to those, that, I think we could go forward. I think.
Or even a sub-portion of the 12-acre parcel.
Well, definitely, definitely.
To your point.
Yeah, I'm not trying to take the wind out of your sails. I just want to.
These are all points of clarification, Mr. Chairman, that are, they're very important. And we need to go into this with clear expectations.
I have another one for you, and this is for very clear expectations. Because this keeps coming up and no one shot it down. I'm not trying to shoot it down. I'm trying to be realistic with you.
Okay.
There are two access points on the north side of the airport for vehicular traffic right now.
Yes.
This letter is asking us to create another one. And honestly, it is the lowest priority of this airport. And we have much bigger priorities. I don't see us abandoning Taxway Charlie to vehicular traffic. I just don't see that occurring. We, we need to move vehicles out Charlie, even though you may not like it, I may not like it. We have a very stringent gate policy. You can't just get through the gate. But there are, in particular, there's people who need to access their hangars that unfortunately need to drive on the taxiway. And this occurs at many, many airports, many airports. Almost every airport that I use, I shouldn't say almost, but I'll say 80% of the airports I use, there's vehicles on taxiways. It's not ideal, but we can't abandon that taxiway. There is no way to get vehicles from the northwest side of the field to the east side of the field with north of Delta, so north of the triangle, without using Taxway Charlie. There's just no way to do it. It's physically impossible. And so I just want to point that out. I know you've brought that up. It's in the letter we received. And I think now's a really valid time to say, look, we have much bigger priorities than creating another access road. And.
Pardon me.
Go ahead.
What are we talking about cost here for an access road? Million dollars?
Easy. Easy, but forget about cost. The, the concept was to get vehicles off Taxway Charlie. And there is no.
I didn't write that.
No, 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 I understand.
It's not in here.
I, I understand. I'm just saying it's, that, that is just, logistically, it's, it's not going to happen. Forget about the fact that, forget about cost for a minute, you know, the economics of it. And again, we have a lot of bigger priorities than creating a third access point on the north side of the airport when we already have two. The south side of the airport has one. So I'm just pointing that out.
I don't really agree with that.
Okay, and that's, that's fair.
For God's lease property, you have, there's certain requirements I think we have to do.
Well, they have, there is access there right now. This is, this is creating a third access point.
I, and if I could, for a point of clarification, because you asked a question, which is a very good question, I want to, I want to answer you. We didn't ask for a third access point.
Okay.
We just, what we're talking about is just working with the airport authority so that down the road, because we know we're going to create more car traffic and more vehicle traffic. So that we work together and we wanted you to know that we would come to you with not only a checkbook, but with kind of an open mind to see what we could do to work together to try and limit that car traffic.
What I'm, what I'm reading here, and again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, again, point of clarification. It says right here in this proposal, we would like to begin dialogue with the airport board and potentially the FAA for providing access roads and limit the use of private vehicles on the airport taxiways.
Right.
Okay, and all I'm saying is, forget about the money for a minute. Just take that out of the equation.
Okay.
Okay, there's an access point on Bravo off Arrowhead. There is another access point on Arrowhead right near Gonai. Okay, that's two access points that both serve that north side of the airport.
Right. This says access roads.
I understood.
Not, not access points.
Okay.
I'm not adding an access point.
Okay, help me understand then. That's all, all I'm saying is, if that's not the case, and I'll stand corrected. Help me understand what, what we're talking about there.
What we're talking about is if you're going to build additional structures on your property and you have very valuable property, there's no question about it, it's going to create more vehicle traffic in that area. All we're talking about is trying to consolidate that in some area so it's not interfering with airport aviation, you know, airplane access and congesting taxiways that you desperately need for airplanes. So I'm not saying take everything off of the taxiways. I'm not saying end that practice. All we're saying is we would come and work together with your board to try and solve the problem and, because we know we're going to be creating even more traffic in that area.
Is the, and, and this is a good time for this discussion. I don't want to get too mired in the weeds on this, but I want to make sure we all understand.
Sure.
Where are you proposing this be?
I'm not, I, I made a comment that we would work with you on it. I'm not, I didn't come here with a plan.
I'm trying to understand, that's all.
Right.
Where, where is it being, what are you thinking?
I'm thinking that part of the lease, the land that we would be leasing from the airport would then have some type of an access road on that land.
Okay.
In other words, some road, that, some road that would.
Perfect. That's, that's, that's what I need to understand.
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay.
And we have that all over the airport.
Right.
But that's part of your leasehold.
Yeah.
And then you guys develop that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, that's not, that's not a grant-eligible project.
In my mind, no, but, you know, you never know. Well.
Yeah.
All right.
You don't know, you know, you're right, but I mean, historically, the FAA has said, you know.
I've got four terminals built with grant money.
That's great. If you can get it, fantastic. I'm just saying, on this airport, okay, all of the asphalt outside of the taxiways and public ramp and runway, all the asphalt around the hangars is privately built. It's all private ramps.
And Mr. Chair, just a point. We're here to try and work with the airport.
Understood.
You're going to find a lot of ways to not work with me. I understand that. But we're here to try and solve some problems and get the pent-up demand and put private money into your facilities. That's all we're here to do.
I just want to understand what you were thinking.
Okay.
Okay, no, I'm not, again, I told you, I wasn't trying to take the wind out of your sails. Okay, so Carl?
I, I guess to that end, I, I have a kind of question that isn't relevant to this specific project, but let's just, look, I'm looking at my screen. I realize we don't have it up here. I'm looking at the airport's own master plan here. And just looking at any piece of that north-south parcel that sure totals about 12 acres. Yeah, well, this airport is interested in leasing this space and has had a long tradition of soliciting interest and hoping that somebody would want to develop something there, which is great. What is the working assumption? I mean, as has been said, there's really no, no great way to get to new facilities on the airport leasehold property that's being talked about here, the 12 acres east of Taxway Bravo, without the creation of a road that doesn't exist inside those. And I think most likely along the eastern boundary of the airport, behind any facility that was going to be built kind of in the space between the fee simple land beyond and the Taxway Bravo. That's actually sort of indicated on our own master plan that that's probably where it would go and that's probably the smart thing. But the last mile that actually goes and touches Arrowhead Drive, where there's actually a proposed future access point there, what has been the working assumption of the airport authority, I haven't been on for four years prior, as to how that kind of access would be developed? Would that be the responsibility, like bringing other sorts of services and infrastructure into an otherwise unserviced lease parcel? Would that be the responsibility of the leaseholder and the developer? Would that be the responsibility of the airport to say, well, hey, I'd love to lease your land, but you gotta find a way at least to get me to the edge of my land that I'm leasing, or something in between? I mean, I think that that's maybe central to the, the comment you're bringing up. Chairman, is, you know, is, to your, you know, in your indication, in our current ACIP, no, we don't have high priority grant requests to the FAA for that last mile. Let's just, you know, focus on an access point off, by Correo up there on.
That's exactly what I'm bringing up, right.
So the question actually is, is this just something that is potentially up for conversation as a term of the lease? Is saying, hey, love the fact that you're interested, but if you want to do this sometime in the next five years, you're probably going to have to put the access in yourself. I mean, is that the, how this dialogue goes?
Not as far as I'm concerned. I think if you develop the property and want to sell it, there's certain responsibilities you have and a road is, access and a road is one of them. And I don't know how you can say, if we're trying to promote this property, how you can say that's a low thing on the road.
Well, just quickly, I, I tend to agree with you, okay? But there is the question of, fantastic, so how will that be paid for? And maybe it ends up being something that the cash is fronted by, say, LSE and there's an abatement or something like this. I'm just trying to understand what has been precedent. I realize we haven't done this in a long time. And just what our, what our, what our aperture is.
I, I guess my point to address Stan and also to you, Carl, and again, we're just having a discussion here. I, I don't have a dog in this fight for sure. I guess my point is, we have two access points already. We have access there.
But we don't have this land developed. We're wanting, we're proposing to develop this.
Understood. And historically, when someone leases the land from us, they pay for their land through the lease and then they develop that access to the land. The airport doesn't do that. And it, you know, it's, it's kind of like saying, if you have your property that you lease or you own where your home is, you have to bring in utilities, you have to provide a driveway, you have to provide water and sewer to your house.
The city has to provide the water and sewer and street to my property, and that's what I'm saying here.
And, and, yeah, the street, the street is already there to the property in the form of a taxiway. And, and I think that's, you know, the issue is, I read this and I said, and to answer your question, what higher priorities do we have? A nighttime approach is a much higher priority than this. Extending the runway to 7,000 feet from its current configuration is a higher priority. We've talked about a new terminal building being a priority. Purchase of snow removal equipment, which we don't own at present except for one truck, is a priority. Relocating the AWAS and upgrading it is a higher priority. And these are all things that are in the works.
I would think there's probably grants out there that would cover something like this. I really.
Yeah, I, I think we also need to, again, before we get too mired in the weeds, see, see what's being proposed. That's what I was trying to understand. What, are you talking about a new access road from the north, from street? Are you talking about access somewhere within the triangle? Are you talking about closing off the taxiway? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, as we, the letter said, we would work with the airport in any capacity, so. But I was just told that we're not going to have any new access roads and we're not going to have roads and we're not going to do this and we're not going to.
Well, no, I'm saying there's higher priorities, Brad.
I just wanted to come and talk to you about this.
That's all.
Basically, open the door and say, we're willing to work with you to solve the vehicle traffic issues. That means in any capacity, whether it's having to give up our leasable land that we pay rent on to put access roads in for the general public use on the airport, whether it's paying for some of those infrastructure improvements in any capacity. We just realized that it's going to generate, generate automobile traffic. It's a real problem for the airport and it needs to be addressed. And it may not be a priority for you, but it is a priority for the FAA. And when you're adding a lot of hangar space and very expensive aircraft, that you keep vehicles off of the taxiways. That's all I'm going to tell you.
And right now, vehicles are prohibited from our taxiways with the exception of Charlie, Taxway Charlie.
Right, so for us to develop in that area, we would need to put in something for the vehicles to travel on. And that's our point. Yes.
Okay.
Can I suggest that maybe you take a look at the property and come back with a suggested where you would like an access?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Like I said, we're, we're here just to introduce it. This was, this was a letter of introduction and, like, we're not going to get buried in all this stuff. I mean, I know you have the best interest of everybody. All right, I do too. We're just trying to get to a point where you understand what we're trying to accomplish so that we can move forward. That's all we're trying to do.
Sure.
And if it's a competitive bid process, that, so be it. That's what the process is.
Depending upon what the use is.
Right.
That, we don't make that decision.
All we're requesting right now is for dry storage. That's all we're requesting.
If it's dry storage, then we go through the, as, as our counsel pointed out, we go through identifying the parcel. Okay, with an APN. And then we have to get appraisals and we provide that to the applicant. And then the applicant pays for that appraisal. And the appraisal is from a list of appraisers that has been approved. We don't do the approval process. And Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, it's approved by Carson City?
Yeah, Carson City uses the N dot approved list of appraisers and they're all MAI appraisers. You know, it's all, they're all pretty well-qualified people.
And don't we have a current appraisal on the center triangle?
Okay, so we have an appraisal, but it was, there's no, there isn't, there isn't a precise identification of what, of what's being appraised, you know, it's, I, I mean, I guess the question is, are we, are, is, is Carson Tahoe Executive looking to lease that all as one parcel without breaking it into pieces? Is that, is that what the proposal is?
We're looking for one parcel.
One large parcel. Well, maybe that appraisal that we have fits that because that appraisal is one large parcel. I mean, it's, it's not defined in any more specificity than your letter is, pretty much, when you look at the appraisal.
Right, we know we have a lot of work to do.
And so we would still need to drill that down so we could actually do a lease. But from the standpoint of having an appraisal, I believe there's one in place.
I think, I think the way that would be handled is if that appraisal has a per square foot and you could use that and then, you know, to make sure that everything's trued up, you'd then, of course, want to go get a survey to find out exactly how many of those square feet at that price actually exist out there within the accurate boundaries of the proposed project and go from there. But that was my understanding, was that we do have a fresh appraisal out there.
Can I?
Please, go ahead, Tim.
I've been kind of listening to all this and a couple of questions. Mr. Takeus, if CTE was to go ahead and, and lease all the land adjacent to Bravo as storage-only dry hangars, but at a later date, they came to us and said, we would like to ask the airport's permission to put in a maintenance facility in this portion of product. Could they come to us at that time, request that, and we start that process of bid, blah, 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 to make it happen once it's been already leased as storage only? That's one question I have.
I'm sure there's a way to do that and I, I don't want to. And I don't want to throw any water on the concept that it couldn't be done. I just don't know how. Because, because, you know, at one point, at one point, the DA's office advised us that if you get into that situation, you basically have to have the tenant walk away from the remainder of their lease so that you could go through the NRS 244 process. Well, that's ridiculous. No tenant is going to walk away from something that they've already invested a bunch of money.
Well, unless, unless they didn't build the property yet, unless it was, unless they just have the lease going and they haven't invested in the infrastructure yet and then they, let's say for instance, next year, you've started, you've already started building some storage hangers and you've got a parcel that's kind of still, you're looking at for what you're going to do and they decide at that time, we'd like to see, because we have outs, we have access from the outside, we can provide all the requirements associated with a maintenance facility. If they can meet all the one, two, three, four, five, then they came to us and said, can I reapply for this to be a maintenance type facility, FBO?
They certainly can ask. I just, you know, I just, I don't know how far they have to go down the path of walking away from whatever they've invested in. And people don't invest in this stuff lightly. We expect when they invest in it, that, you know, they, they've put their good faith into it. Plus, the other thing is, you know, we have historically required in all of our leases that construction be completed within two years of the lease. In part because it isn't just the land revenue, it's also the real property taxes on the hangers that are constructed and the personal property taxes on the aircraft that we're looking for. So, you know, we've had people come to us in the past asking for options and things like that on the land. And the airport authority, I mean, you could do that legally. I don't see, I don't see a legal prohibition as long as you did it for the appraised price.
Right.
But I'm just telling you that historically, the airport authority has not done that.
Okay, so what I was trying to get to is that as we get together and we start working on your plan and we're looking at all these different options, we may want to consider an option, you carve out one portion of that and actually of the Bravo and say, you know, let's, let's apply for this one as a maintenance type. It's a consideration at this time. Or say, we'll take the risk of trying to reapply. But that's the discussion we all have to have because I personally don't know the rules. And I'm learning as we go along and you're learning as we go along.
Absolutely. And I heard the same, when you, Carl, you had mentioned the same thing earlier, maybe you put it into two separate pieces or you look at a way to not prohibit yourself from down the road if you wanted to do something there.
We just need to know our challenges going forward and we have to work together to say, okay, and if we have to do some research, let's get some research started.
I also heard from Counselor Takeus that, you know, the land is appraised differently depending on the use, whether it's a commercial use or whether it's a private use.
Yeah, so in other words, if you had that, say, I'm going to have one chunk to be appraised.
Right.
For instance, right now, if I'm not mistaken, the former airport manager had this triangle appraised just recently and it was just as of April, it was, April, I think, was its effective date. It was given to us in May, but I think if you go back, it says April's effective and it's six months. And that was for, basically for what was drawn on the master plan, which is storage hangers. That's the way I understand it from everything, my research. So I think you're right on target with what's going on in the triangle.
So, so we, in theory, we could use that appraisal. We may not, but we could use that appraisal going forward as a benchmark for the value of the land. However, a lease would have to be entered into within the timeframe before that appraisal expires. Again, we don't set the expiration date, it's statutory in nature.
So we just got that to you guys today or yesterday with it?
It's, it's.
Today.
Yeah, in total, on your end, I understand this is the airport's decision, your board decision as to the authority, as to how you want to do this as far as, I know you have to come up with a proper value for the land.
Right.
We understand that, we want to comply. We're just wanting to share with you our, what we'd like to do and what our intent would be with the land itself. We have an immediate need and, you know, this is what we'd like to do. So, and again, I don't, I, this is your property. This is the airport's property, it's the city's property, and we want to make sure that we're doing the best we can possibly be, being the best partner that we can be as we develop it. We just really believe in the city, we believe in the airport, we believe in the demand that's here, and we really feel that this is a very good investment of private dollars going into a public airport that will help everybody and help everything to grow.
Well, I know that our goal as a board is to collaborate and try to make this work. So, what I was trying to come up, what I was just trying to go, just reading between the lines, and I'm, again, I don't claim to be an expert on any of the details associated with the development and the lease program, but I was looking at the master plan and I saw, and this is where Michael and I had a discussion, the master plan had these proposed extra, extra access points put in. And that was done basically by FAA-sponsored engineers.
Yeah.
And they had some, their own purposes for that as well. And Michael and I were looking at that and saying, well, geez, the way they drew it, I see what they're trying to say, but I don't see how it's going to help us with congestion the way it's drawn. Which doesn't mean.
I don't have the answers.
Yeah, doesn't mean we can't mitigate that by perhaps having traffic going along the north edge of the triangle as far as that's the access point into all those hangers. It doesn't mean there's lots of options we can't work on. And I think that as a team, we can do that. We can sit down and make sure that everybody's meeting all the safety and, and all of the requirements that are necessary so that, number one, you have a parcel you can, you can, you can lease effectively because you can get it done at a cost that allows people to afford their lease for a hanger. Number two, that we have the safety required for our tenants and for the FAA so that we're all comfortable with safety. And number three, we have to abide by all of our own airport guidelines. So, I don't see any roadblocks here, I just see we have a bunch of stuff to start working on, that's all.
Yeah, I, this is so preliminary, but we wanted to get everything into you in a formal request to enter this process. And that's what we're hoping to accomplish.
And I have a question for Mr. Takeus and for the board. Just as, just, I'm just throwing this stuff out because I have been pretty engaged in this application.
Yeah.
So if CTE go has, proceeds with what we're doing and they go ahead and request to us to start doing diligence for the leasing both of the triangle and of Bravo, and we're entering in this now, today, what happens next week if some other buddy, other person comes in and says, I'd like to lease some or all of this space as well? Is CTE going to have some kind of a, they're in first place at this point until, until later? Or is it just blow up? Or, I mean, what goes on until we have a lease signed? I have no idea how we would deal with that as an airport authority.
Not an enforceable deal until it's signed by all the parties and approved by the governmental entities. So, it has to be signed by the, approved by the airport authority, signed by both parties and approved by the city before it's solid. Anytime before that, somebody, I guess, could come to us and say, I would bid more for it or I, I've got a better idea. And they could come and do that and we could say, okay, sorry, we've got a better deal here. I mean, that's, that's, it's one of the problems with the shorthand method of leasing. You don't have that issue if you follow 244 because you put it out there, everybody comes bids, whoever bids highest, boom, they're there and the deal is done. But the shorthand method of getting an appraisal, and we still have to publish something in the paper, there is a publish requirement, which I'm sure Ken took care of with Ortiz one early. And I have to look, go back, it may actually apply to this one too, but there is a publish requirement. No, it probably doesn't because we didn't have an appraisal for, for anything beyond Ortiz at the time. But, yeah, you don't have a deal until you've got a signed deal. I mean, I.
Is there anything that prohibits the board from having some type of a understanding that as long as this lease is going forward, that we are going to leave them in first place? Or are we not allowed to do that? Is that, I don't, I don't know how this works.
I think you could do that. I, you know, I don't see a legal prohibition against doing that.
I'm looking at it from a practical standpoint, which is, you know, we're going to make a commitment to proceed with this at some point in time. I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't. I don't see anyone banging down our door to do this, although there has, what's that? I know people are calling. I know, but there, people, there are people who call, there are people who act. There's, there's one, there's one real, there's a bona fide party that does want to leave space on the land east of Bravo, west of the fence line. They do want to lease land there, they're bona fide, I have vetted them, and we're going to just see what happens. And in that case, it's kind of first in, first win.
I respect that, I mean, I understand the process.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the way it is. As far as I'm concerned, I, you know, I don't know if that would be an accurate way to look at it, but I think, I think that's what you're getting at too, Tim, is first in, first win.
Well, I just think that if they're, if CTE is going to make this commitment, then they're going to start and we're going to get a lease, a lease drafted, starting to draft a lease immediately, which we're hoping to do, I'd like to give them some sense of commitment that we are going to proceed unless we have something falter. I don't know, I don't, I don't know the, maybe, Carl, you have a better way of putting this? I'm not good at describing this type of stuff.
No, I, I concur with what you're saying. I think there's something I, there's something I've come to learn tonight that, you know, in my 41 years of living here in Carson City and being, I thought intimately knowledgeable about the airport, didn't really recognize. And that is, unless I've heard something wrong, we actually don't have APNs created by Carson planning, I guess, for the spaces we're talking about tonight, let alone any sort of subdivision within them. Is that a correct understanding?
I think, I think that may be correct. I just don't know. I know we have APNs for pieces that have been taken out of that area and presumably there is an APN for that entire area, but whether it's for that entire area or extends, you know, the APN that, that we may be pulling out of it may also include taxiways on it and other stuff.
You know, I think I've been playing in, in the GIS system, you know, as I'm looking at other things for our campus and stuff and, you know, have clicked on, say, the center triangle. I feel like it takes like the whole airport turns red and it's like, oh, boy.
I think what happens, and I could be wrong because I've had to go to the recorder's office and sign on behalf of the airport on plans, I think they actually create an APN when we do a leasehold.
So where I'm going with my question is, this is literally uncharted ground, right?
No.
To, to create a pun. I, I, not the process, but this particular land. And the question is, whose choice is it to break it into zero pieces, one piece, two pieces, 10 pieces? And if we are being approached by somebody who's interested in, call it chunk A, the center triangle, and chunk B, the strip east of Bravo, is that something that, based on the interests of the potential lessor, we would then, who has the actual ability to go and say, aha? So CTE says, we'd like to take, say, the 12 acres alongside Bravo and make that three different pieces. And maybe we'd like to apply for dry storage lease and have it appraised as such for two of them and some other usage for one of them. Would we, provided that we all ended up in the right place, would it be the airport authority's duty to trot down to the city and basically subdivide the land?
Okay, so, so ultimately, it's the airport authority's decision as to how to break it up. But that's why I was saying earlier, we need to hear from the applicant because, you know, you're going to want to break it up in a way that's consistent with how they want to break it up or they want to use it. When you talk about marching down, the way it's done is you either file a parcel map to break it into specific parcels, or you file a record, a survey, from which they can generate a parcel map, which is how we've done it in the past. And it isn't just a matter of walking down to the assessor's office or the recorder's office and getting this done. It means you go out and you engage a surveyor or engineer to put those together, put, sign their name on it, put their stamp on it, record it, and you use that to break into parcels. At that point, the assessor's office will assign separate parcel numbers to those parcels.
Right.
But that's what they require. And I've been through the process enough times and been on the phone with them enough times to know that they expect us to bring it to them. They aren't going to do it on their own and that's not really their job.
So, so here's the real upshot of, and thank you for that, you know, the upshot of where I'm going. So it's the airport's, you know, ability to and authority to go and request that parcel, those parcel maps, yes, based on a competent survey. Where I'm going with this is, until such a time that that has been done, how are we supposed to contemplate unlike bids? So, for example, if you have CTE saying, we would like to make a proposal to lease the entire 12 acre slice, and you have somebody that Chairman Golden is alluding to, for example, who might say, we just would like to take a third of it between these two access points. How are we as the authorities supposed to apples to apples that?
That is a fantastic question.
It's a real problem if you have them broken into pieces because then you're faced with the decision, should we lease to the person who wants to lease all of it or the person who just wants to lease part of it? And I think you know where that'll end up. You'll lease to the person who wants to lease all of it, it makes more sense.
And, and let me, let me state two things and then I'm going to interrupt this discussion, okay?
Let me just say one other thing though, real quick though, which is, in the past, what we've done is we've broken the pieces out to these parcels in advance and we had our airport engineers do that as part of the layout of the airport. We have not gotten, gotten down to that granularity with the rest of the center of the triangle. And so the next step would be figure out what that is. And in the past, we've always broken into pieces so that we had the option of either leasing out part of, or leasing out all of it. Now, part of that was because we also expected there might be different kind of uses and we're thinking, okay, one use may be more compatible with another. Here, where we're all talking airport lease on the center triangle, all aircraft storage, that's less of a reason, but that might be more of a reason on the area next to taxiway Bravo. Sorry, I just.
No, no, that's fine. I'm going to make a point of reference, then I'm going to interrupt this conversation on behalf of the applicant. The letter we received states 20 acres, that the applicant would like to lease 20 acres of the triangle. The triangle is larger than 20 acres, so we would have to figure out what portion of the triangle, you know, we're talking about. And then the 12 acres, of course, is the 12 acre parcel east of Bravo, west of the fence line. And your point is well-taken, Carl. If someone came to us, wanted to lease three of those 12 acres, it may be more valuable based on the fact it's a smaller size, it may be more valuable based on its location. Maybe if it's in the middle of that 12, it's less valuable than on either end. Or maybe if it's closer to the access point, you know, at the end of Bravo, maybe it's more valuable. I don't know how an appraiser would deal with that, I'm not an appraiser, but, you know, with my experience, smaller property may be more valuable and location is everything. So, again, again, I want to, let me interrupt all comments for a moment. The applicant, Mr. Pickett, would like to provide some comments. He's on the phone, on the call. So, Danielle, can you get Mr. Pickett kind of patched in here?
Yeah.
Right, can you, can we get Mr. Pickett then on the line? He's on, he's dialed in.
Let me just go ask Keith in the back if he could put the applicant on.
I, I'm on the line if you can hear me, I'm on the call and number.
We, we got it, James, thank you. How are you?
Good, so you can all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, great, thank you for, thank you for all this. I have been listening and have been on the line. To echo some of the things Brad said and also just to answer and clarify some of the recent comments, first of all, Michael, the 20 acres referenced in that letter, similar to what you guys were just talking about, no APNs, that was really just an estimate of eyeballing it because you can't click on the GIS map on that triangle parcel and know exactly how big it is. So, our intention is to lease that entire area and the entire 12 acre area. And, you know, the purpose of the comments about the access in the letter really was our understanding of the airport's desire to work with us because part of the problem on those two parcels, which I don't think are contemplated in the, in the appraisals and hopefully will be in, in any new appraisals, is the, the lack of access and utilities and infrastructure to get to those parcels. The comment that somebody might come along and be willing to pay more for, you know, a couple acres of one of those parcels, I think the board needs to consider that anybody willing to do that will have to pay a lot larger infrastructure cost to improve the infrastructure and the access to that parcel. So, what we, what our intent is to do with the, the airport and this board is to really just work hand in hand on what works for them, what fits their master plan and their, their long-term and short-term goals and still helps get us the property that we're looking to, to, to develop out at this time as a dry storage for aircraft. That's, that's kind of our purpose. We don't want to muddy the water with. That's kind of our purpose. We don't want to muddy the water with potential future things that we might want to do. At this time, we are interested and ready to move forward and start the process on the entire triangle parcel and the entire twelve-acre parcel. One comment was, it's not, the airport doesn't have to commit until the lease is signed, which I understand, but does the airport still expect CTE to pay for the appraisal and to move forward in good faith without likewise good-faith commitment that they're going to be working with us?
I think that goes without saying, James, that we wouldn't be asking you to pay for the appraisal if we don't lease you the land.
Got it, okay.
You know, if it's our decision not to lease you the land.
Yeah, exactly. I don't think you would expect somebody to pay for...
No, we wouldn't do that.
To start that process. Okay, good. So hopefully that, you know, shed some light on some things. I know there's a lot of what Brad was talking about. But in no way are we just looking to, you know, to do a fishing expedition here to tie things up with no intentions of developing. Obviously, that's a lot of land to develop all at once. But we would work and be completely transparent with the airport on kind of a rollout plan to deliver supply on this demand that we have now. So that's really the intention here.
I do have a question for you, James. I hate to put you on the spot, but I got to ask.
Yeah, please do.
So, and this is, this dawned on me after our conversation yesterday and then subsequent conversation I've had with Carl. So the product that you're contemplating designing, building, developing here, are you thinking it's a condominiumized product or a for-rent product? Or do you know?
Are you talking about, are you talking about the deeded property off airport?
No, 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 on airport, on airport, the hangars.
Well, it can't be deeded because we're ground leasing it from the airport.
Right, right. But what I was getting at is, are you contemplating condominiumized product? In other words, for-sale product or renting leasing hangars?
Rent, renting and leasing.
Okay, great.
And Brad, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's all we've been discussing and looking at market numbers on.
I agree with you completely on the renting and the leasing, but I don't want to prohibit us from doing any condominium stuff down the road.
No one is. I just wanted, I just want to clarify that. There's a reason I asked that question.
Because there's always somebody that wants to buy what you're trying to lease them.
Exactly. There's a reason, there's a reason I ask, talk to you about it offline.
Yeah, yeah, but majority of it...
Yeah, there's a reason I ask. There is a reason.
Yeah.
Any other questions for James while we have the pleasure of having him on the phone?
James, I think, this is Tim Puelas. Steve Lewis had mentioned to me that Jet Ranch actually has a small part of this triangle that they're not, it's not developed. It's on the west side. Do we have any idea how much that is?
We do. We can easily get that. And I want to say, based on prior knowledge, it's 1.5 acres. Steve, do you remember that one?
I don't have it exactly.
I think it is one, it's one...
You should know because originally...
That's right.
The airport issued it to the Fuel Island.
Exactly. And then we, and then when it couldn't, when the fire marshal said you can't put any fuel there, we were like, okay, we'll swap it out with Jet Ranch.
My question is, I don't see any value for Jet Ranch that, whether they want to keep it or not, there may be an option for CTE to actually offer to somehow work a deal with that leased space. I don't know. It's just, we're trying to work together here, looking for the best, the best way to mitigate this.
I'm fairly certain it's 1.5 acres.
So, and that would have something to do with your access and egress too, so.
Thank you. It would be a great solution. And that's what we're looking for, is to figure out a way to get things done.
So we're looking for any way to make this a win-win.
So one point that I'd like to make, if possible, and James, thank you so much. I hope you made it through security okay, is...
No.
Is we're going through NEPA right now up in Reno. And if anybody is not familiar with the FAA...
Yeah, what's NEPA?
NEPA is an environmental study that's now required on any airport property by the FAA for development. So we're working towards getting a categorical exclusion there. We're working on some things with the Reno Airport. But even going the shortest route possible, it's twelve months. And that's just to get through the FAA study. And that's hiring six or seven experts in wildlife and tribal historical. You have to hire an expert to go out there and sit on the property and watch for endangered species. It's all required now, and it's all part of this new process. So you made the comment earlier about leasing the land counselor and then having to build within two years. We just want to make sure that we're realistic on that with how long it takes in this environment right now to build on some of this property. Some people are being held up underneath at other airports for three to five years for construction.
And this is James again. We're willing to meet certain benchmarks. I mean, they just have to be reasonable. Like I said, it is not our intention just to tie up land indefinitely. One thing that would help us, and I know the comment was said too, there's a lot of details and things to work out going forward. And like Brad said, we really just want to work with the airport and plan these details and have this discussion, pay for the appraisal, take these next steps. In regards to how much land or square footage, access, we have the airport master plan, but we've reached out to the engineers and whoever we could to try to get the CAD drawing, if such. And we haven't had any luck. So I don't know if the board is able to help us get that. That will certainly help us understand what we're talking about for both of us.
James, I think I can get that for Kaufman and Associates to the last master plan. And I think I sent you all the PDF versions, but that was all created in AutoCAD. So I think that we can probably reach out to Kaufman.
Exactly. Well, I know the PDF, yeah, and the PDF versions, I think, are even online. But to get it in CAD, it's easier, it's very easy to measure. Hey, how big is that triangle parcel? How big is this parcel just west of Jet Ranch? It's easy to get.
I'll reach out to Kaufman and see if I can get that.
Let me make a suggestion here to kind of circumvent that particular matter and move this entire discussion forward. We need to, in my opinion, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, we need to bring in a surveyor to have the land surveyed and identified. Proper meets and bounds. I don't know that we're going to have an APN for it, but we need a legal description. And that would be really the next step in this process.
Yeah, we do need a legal description, although I think, I think there certainly would be value in sharing the CAD, the CAD drawings because, you know, those are what everybody uses for their development process. I don't know where the boundaries are, you know? I mean, that's the difficult thing because I don't know if there is a parcel number associated with this. I know there's got to be one that covers this, but if there is one that's associated with this, what is actually included in that?
Yeah, let me make the suggestion that this authority move forward. I fully support what's being proposed here. Let me make the suggestion that the airport authority move forward with retaining the services of a engineer here to give us a legal description of the properties that we're talking about. We're going to need the services of an engineer to do this.
I'm sure we can add it on as a project under our existing engineering contract with Armstrong.
And if for no other reason, Chairman, that, you know, let's just say you've got this center triangle, right? And it's just all this land that fills all the space between the taxiways. We, as the master developer, right, obviously need to have setbacks from those taxiways.
Absolutely.
Places where, you know, to comply with FAA wishes, best practices, whatever. It's, you know, and I think that's exactly what you're getting at, is actually defining the space we're really going to lease. And I think that Armstrong, Armstrong currently, right, would be the prudent ones to engage.
And now that we know, because of James' input, that we're not talking about twenty acres of the triangle, but the entire triangle, that's a completely different discussion. And so let's find out, you know, where the boundaries are.
Once, once you take, yeah, once you take away taxiways and setbacks, I mean, if you look at the airport now, the APNs that were created for currently leased or ground-leased parcels is really just the actual structure plus the area for tie-downs.
Well, it's the actual structure...
That's at least what it shows.
It's the actual structure plus ramp areas and taxi lanes is what it is.
Well, I, it might have been their responsibility to develop those, but it doesn't seem to be part of their actual APN parcel.
It is, it is.
Okay.
It is. You know, we, I'm looking right now, James, at one of our beloved hangar owners sitting behind Brad. And he can attest to the fact that they have a ramp area running the entire length of their hangar development on both the east and the west side. That's asphalt that they not only developed and built and designed and engineered, but they also maintained. And I know last year, they paid for it to be resealed and treated. And it's, it's separate from the taxiway.
No, and I understand that, but, and they also pay the, and they also pay the ground lease on that area, correct?
That's exactly right.
Right.
Yeah, they pay the ground lease on everything. So if you, if you take, for example, the Fuel Island, which you're familiar with, all the asphalt around the Fuel Island, the entire parcel, is a leasehold. And it's leased by the ownership of the Fuel Island. Even though the Fuel Island only occupies a portion of it, the airport doesn't maintain any of that asphalt, and the leasehold is for the entire ramp area. Same thing with the hangars. All the asphalt around the hangars is, you know, leased by the hangar owners or the hangar association that owns the entire structure. And Brad's shaking his head, no.
No, I'm not.
No, 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 not you, Brad, that Brad. Brad behind you. He's shaking his head, no.
I'm kind of agreeing with you.
But there's, there's an area of land around the structures that, yes, is leased by the hangar owners. So, yes, Brad, the master association leases it. So, he keeps shaking his head, no.
No, but the, but the exact, the exact sizes of those buildings and the leasable area, I mean, that's all going to come way down the road with design and everything. And the purpose of tonight is for us to request, you know, approval from the board to move forward with those lease negotiations, with, to start working out all those details and to pay for an appraisal to go underway, so we know what number we're talking about.
Well, here, again, what we need to do, James, before we go to the appraisal, and no one's stopping us from going to the appraisal, but we have to, as our counsel said, we have to identify the property properly through a survey. So that's, that's the next step.
And let me just be clear. I'm not sure it's a survey that's needed, but we need to talk to either Kaufman or Armstrong. And the more I think about it, we might want to talk to Kaufman first because when they did the master plan, they incorporated all those setback areas and the different use areas. They had all that stuff laid out about where you can build and where you can't. And so they may actually be able to do it more efficiently than Armstrong. But what we need to know is, because it's the same thing that Carson Tahoe needs to know, you need to know what you can actually lease and utilize, and then go forward with that. The other thing is, you know, we talked a little bit about access, this other access from the north. I mean, we do have master plan drawings that we actually retained access from the north side. And I know that that's not a high priority, but that's certainly something that I think that the prospective tenant should also be looking at to see whether or not that better utilizes, you know, gives better access to their property. It's already paved. I mean, it's already there. It's the area that's right next to Ted Barban's hangar, and we retained that. We kept that accessway because originally it was designed as an accessway to the airport.
Right, but is, is that improved or is it unimproved?
Well, it's paved.
Oh, it is paved, okay.
I mean...
But there's no, there's no gate access there?
Carl may know more about it than me because he's utilized that space, but...
It is paved and there is a fence there. There's not an airport gate. There is a private gate.
It is marked on the airport, it is marked on the airport master, master plan, right, as a proposed?
That is correct.
As a proposed option for a north side access.
It is correct. And in deference to Mr. Cost, I mean, the FAA has the hairs on the back of their neck raised every time they see cars on Taxiway Charlie. My point to you, my point to you was, they can, you know, stand on their head and spit nickels at us.
There's no other option.
A, there's no other option. B, when we ask them to fund it. Yeah, then all of a sudden, reality comes into play. I wasn't trying to argue with you. I'm just like, hey, you know, here's reality.
Goes to the back of the line.
Yeah, there's no, there's no other option. We can't eliminate Taxiway Charlie and abandon it to vehicular access. And it, and it doesn't serve much of a purpose if we, at this juncture.
Mr. Chair, I think everybody on this entire board sitting here would love to wave a wand and have a perimeter road beautifully around the airport that everybody could use and access every point. But the reality is, you have what you have right now.
That's my point to you. That's all.
But we just want to, we'll work with you to try and figure out a solution that works for everybody.
An improvement if we need one at some point.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and no one's arguing that. I just wanted to give you the...
I understand. I get a little spirited sometimes.
There's a half dozen other priorities here. Let's, let's...
And you named several that are probably much more important for the community than this. But what you have is you have a private developer that wants to come and spend a lot of money. And James, obviously, with his track record and all the development these guys done, they're the right fit.
No arguments there. Yeah, no arguments.
It's a good thing.
No arguments on any of those points. I was just pointing out to you, reality meets the road at some point. That's all.
So for my own edification and for James, I know we came here to ask to enter into lease negotiations, lease discussions.
Well, you're entered into it.
I know that there's others, so there's other steps. But I think we need to get clarity on the survey. We need to get clarity on what the appraisal would look like, whether you're going to be able to accept that appraisal, whether it applies to both parcels or...
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't apply to both parcels. Let me answer that question. That's an easy question to answer. We need to get a separate appraisal, as I talked to James about. We need to get a separate appraisal for the property along Bravo. That's just a separate property. The next step in the process would be for this airport authority to authorize, I think we need to authorize a survey of both properties. Steve's saying maybe not, maybe contact Kaufman Associates first. But we need to identify, we need to have a process to identify the parcels legally, identify a legal description. And then we need to authorize an appraisal of the land, the approximate twelve acres along Bravo, east of Bravo, west of the fence line. We need to do that. And then, Steve, can we utilize the appraisal that we had for the triangle? Or should we, you know, seek a new appraisal?
I would need to look at it a little closer to be able to tell that. But the first step is, we got to identify the property, whether that's a survey or whether it can be done in some quicker or simpler way, we need to get there.
Yeah, we need to identify.
The action I would recommend is that you authorize the staff to find the most, you know, the quickest, cheapest way to have a concrete identification of the two pieces of property. And that's both the center triangle area that's, that's leasable and the area that's east of Taxiway Bravo that's leasable. And I do have one question that maybe, Mr. Cost, you can answer. Is one of the, one of the maps that was included with, with the letter shows, shows the Taxiway Bravo developed area. Is that, is that what you're thinking about? Or is this just a map pulled out of one of the master plan options?
I can answer that. It's a map pulled out of the master plan options. Conceptually, we would do something very similar to that. I just, it may not look exactly like that, same sizes and dimensions of buildings, but it would be very similar. Because there's some things that are on...
For James, to James, tie onto that, if I could. We would have had a much more specific exhibit if we had a CAD drawing to work off of. And in regards to finding the exact, you know, description or size, I got that triangle parcel appraisal today. I haven't been able to dive into it. But the size that's referenced on that appraisal might be a pretty good description of what we're trying to go after. appraisal might be a pretty good description of what we're trying to go after.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that, James.
Yeah, they, this is Steve Takeus again. It looks like, I glanced at the appraisal. I didn't look at it, take a deep dive into it, but it looks like they used the description, kinda like the same description I gave Brad to put in his letter to you, to us, uh, you know, that you put in your letter, which is, give us the approximate location so we can get moving on this. Um, and we'll refine it along the way. And so if you're looking, if you're, if you're hoping like I was, that the appraisal would have a nice, you know, clean legal description, um, it, it wasn't in there when I looked at it.
No, and I understand. And in the letter where it says plus or minus 20 acres or whatever it is, we're not looking for plus or minus 20 acres. We are looking at that triangle parcel, whatever size that is.
No, that, that's really good to know. I appreciate that, James.
Um, well, I, I would make a motion to, um, request that staff, uh, indeed, um, pursue an exploration of what the best option is to reach a speedy understanding of the definition of these two major parcels, or any subsections of them that are meaningful. And I'm thinking more along this, the 12 acres on Bravo, it kind of naturally breaks into three chunks. Um, and, and work with whatever con- combination of Kaufman and Armstrong could do that best. And in the same breath, uh, to let's please get, uh, the CTE team, the underlying CAD, because I'll tell you, probably a little secret here is that they'll probably be able to load that up into their software and get to those answers pretty quick alongside, um, the airport. Um, I think that'll be very helpful. So I, I would make the motion that we, um, you know, have staff please, uh, continue to take those steps because I think they are the next ones in, in, are being able to consider this and define what that lease would be and help CT get their, um, request tuned.
So Carl, when you refer to staff, are you require, are you referring to Steve and me?
Yeah, that's a really good question.
Is that what I'm hearing, uh, Mr. Takeus?
Than that, Mr. Pullins.
Oh, great. Tell me.
Because I'm taking the first vacation in 18 months next week, and so I'm not gonna be here next week.
The correct, the correct pronoun, the correct pronoun is "they," right?
That's right, "they." Thank you, thank you, James.
We don't, we don't need to make any sort of motion on that.
No, but I want to clarify something. We did, I did speak with the appraisers that did the triangle. They were engaged by the, the former airport manager for an entire use project, similar to what you did, what you're proposing to us. And that's what, that was their understanding. I, I did get that clear. And they also said, because they've done all the research, they could provide a, a turnaround appraisal for the Bravo portion in around 45 days at a $3,000 cost, less than the others, because they have most of the work already done from the, uh, previous appraisal. So that's something we could, we could get, it's, it's up to our colleagues here, but we get that started right away.
That's something we would need to make a motion and authorize, but let's, let's break this up into two things. So there's some, there's some direction that Carl has requested that staff make good efforts to identify the parcels with legal description. Tim and I will work on that. We'll, we'll get in touch with Kaufman Associates, and if necessary, we'll get in touch with Armstrong, get a land survey done, and add it to Armstrong's, um, you know, work order, if you will. So that, that's something we can easily do. Then there's the issue of appraisal or appraisals, plural. And again, I'm not sure the Kaufman Associates appraisal, I, I know that it's-
Johnson Perkins?
Johnson Perkins, I'm sorry. Johnson Perkins appraisal is valid or will be valid by the time this is wrapped up. That's another issue. I don't know if we should enter into a new one, if we should choose another firm. I don't know what we should do on that.
So my advice on that is move forward with the other part. Let us look a little closer at the existing appraisal, because, uh, when I had discussions with, with our former airport manager about it, the idea was to get the appraisal for the entire area with the idea that we would offer chunks over time, and we'd be in a position to do that. So my expectation is that it's been done in a way that would also lend itself to this request. Uh, but I would want to look at it closer to see. And then the other thing is, if we get pushed for time on the six months, there are other options. You know, there, the option is you get a different appraisal, or many times you can get, uh, a renewed, a renewed appraiser at a steeply discounted price because-
They've already done the work.
Yeah, because they've already done most of the work.
Or they can just update it. Yeah.
Exactly.
It's probably an updated appraisal. It's pretty easy.
Yeah. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at the appraisals right now as a barrier to moving forward. I think the biggest thing is getting a good definition of the built, leasable area. And, and in a way that we can also get APNs associated with it so that we can actually go ahead and lease it.
Okay.
That's what we need to do. And I think Kaufman should probably be the starting point, not only because they have the CAD drawings, but because they've already done all the calculations about where you can and where you can't build. Um, and then if they can't do it, then Armstrong. But either both of those companies are on contract with us. Kaufman has an ongoing contract with us for planning. Armstrong has an ongoing contract with us for engineering. So whoever can do it best, um, we can always add it on to their, as a project under their contract. Obviously, we want to look at what it costs and that kinda stuff, but-
That should be easy.
That, that should be pretty-
Um, Paul, Stan, you folks want to weigh in on anything here?
You know, part of our whole strategic plan here was to, when people come in and want to develop land, is to be able to get on this thing and, and be, uh, responsive and get things, get things moving. Otherwise, we're gonna, we're gonna chase them away. So I just want to make sure we're not trying to set this whole project up in, in series. Okay. Where I think we need to really focus on going in, 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 in parallel in some way, you know, Brad came here to get, get, uh, try and get some approval to move forward the lease. Is there any way we can go, uh, parallel, uh, in this project so we're not bureaucratic organization slowing down the whole process here?
I, I couldn't agree with you more on that. I guess what we could do is authorize new appraisals to be-
Look, Michael, if, this is James, if I could say something on that. This is James, if I could say something on that as the applicant. Um, just like we don't know the exact lease rate until we have an appraisal, um, I, I would, I would hope or think or ask that the board consider approval of moving forward with this lease. And those details, uh, not just of the price or the lease rate, but also the exact size is all gonna be figured out once those details come forward. I mean, that's, that's at least how I think the process would go.
I mean, if we've already got a, a, on the triangle, a cost per square foot, and it goes up by 10% or down by 5%, it's a pretty simple math.
Yeah.
That's what I mean. It's, it is whatever, it is whatever it's gonna, it is whatever it's gonna be. And that's the same for the size, the exact size of the parcels.
Okay. So what, what, what do we want to do as an airport authority to move this along? We've already authorized that Tim and then myself, if necessary, will be involved in getting the parcels identified with a legal description. What else do we need to do? We've provided, uh, James with the appraisal for the triangle area. And then we would have to get appraised the 12 acres, approximate 12 acres along Bravo.
Yeah, I mean, um, we get, we get the AutoCAD drawings or the AutoCAD, uh, files, rather, so they can actually, um, input them into their system for them. They can be working on that in parallel. And the other thing we could be doing in parallel is we can put together the draft model lease. I mean, we already have a model lease that we can work from, that we can provide to them.
They've been provided that already.
Okay, well.
One step ahead of you.
Couple of comments that are just online, but not quite the same.
No, and we, we got that, we got that today too. So I mean, it's gonna take time to dig in on this, but we don't want to dig on, on this or spend any more money, even with our own engineers. If we know, if we don't know, we have, you know, a, a, you know, a leasing airport working with us also in good faith.
Well, I, I think you, you definitely have the support of this authority, James. There's no, I, I think there's a little doubt about that. Looking around the room here, if I were to get a nod of heads or thumbs up, I don't know that there's an action that we would take at this time spare, um, retaining an appraiser.
Well, I propose a couple of things. Number one, the AutoCAD drawings are not necessarily gonna indicate the actual parcel size. They're just gonna be whatever was drawn. We have to get that survey done to verify that. And then, and if it has been done, maybe perhaps there would be, but we don't know until we get the, um, we, so we have to, at this point, we have to, I think we should move to move forward on getting the drawings, researching a survey possibility, and, uh, authorizing appraisal of Bravo. We already have appraisal of the, of, a working appraiser right now to start with for the, the triangle. Um, if we have to make some adjustments, again, that's part of our negotiations going back and forth. But right now, we have to get the darn Bravo. And it, talking to the appraiser, they don't feel it's gonna be much different than the, than the triangle. They don't see any different, just on a cursory discussion, which no, which I will never, um, pretend to say is fact, but the appraiser said, well, it doesn't seem to be much different, doesn't have frontage access, it doesn't have blah, blah, blah. So anyway, at any rate, um, I would hope that we could just vote to move forward with moving forward on getting drawings, researching a, a survey, and authorizing appraisal of Bravo.
Okay. You want to make a formal motion, Carl?
No, he's just, I want him to-
Okay. Go for it, Tim.
Well, then I move that the airport authority moves forward with, with, um, gathering AutoCAD drawings for the parcels in, in question, researching the actual boundaries associated with that, and if necessary, move forward on survey. And lastly, to authorize, uh, to engage in a appraisal of the Taxiway Bravo land.
Okay, let me, let me clarify this before we have a second on it. Okay, so what we're, what we're really authorizing as an airport authority is the engagement of an appraiser to conduct an appraisal for approximately 12 acres of the land that, along Taxiway Bravo, west of the fence line, north of the Fuel Island. And then we're going to engage our existing engineers, plural, to either conduct a survey or provide us with some sort of a legal description of the lands in discussion right now, the approximate 12 acres and the triangle area.
Well put.
Okay. The, the other matters that you bring up, we can just forward that to the applicant. We don't need to take any action on that.
Okay.
Okay? Okay.
Is that the motion?
That's the motion. Danielle, did you get that?
Really?
Okay, awesome. I don't have to repeat it.
Second, Stan?
Okay, thank you, Stan. So we have a motion and a second to engage our existing engineers to identify with a legal description the triangle area and the approximate 12 acres along Bravo, west of the fence line, north of the Fuel Island, and to engage an appraiser to appraise said 12 acres. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
One last question?
Yep.
Do we need to formally make a motion to officially say we're engaging in lease negotiations? Or is that redundant?
No, that's redundant. We're, we're having a discussion right now with these gentlemen.
Okay.
I, I would imagine that one of the next things, uh, kind of on the CTE homework slate, is to, um, have the opportunity, once you've had the opportunity to kind of digest, um, the information and the model lease, or one model lease, uh, at least, but it's, it's fairly representative, um, to come back with your questions to, you know, us in the interim and keep this moving. Um, and, you know, questions, concerns, um, you know, things that you, uh, you know, would take exception to. Um, and I think that's probably the best action, um, in the interim for the CTE side.
Okay. Thank you, and we will do that. So I have one question or suggestion, if I could, cause I'm, again, this is, every airport is different, as you know, in the community. And we want to make sure that we're following all the steps and doing everything the right way. So, and I really, we appreciate your consideration tonight. And this has been a very lengthy discussion. A lot of information's come out. I think everybody's got a clear understanding of where, what we're trying to accomplish. Um, would it be in the best interest to begin to work towards a term sheet to then put into the lease so that we can understand? I mean, that's what we're doing in Reno with our, all of our, all of our leases and all of our property are all summarized in a term sheet before we go to lease.
You, you can certainly do that. It wouldn't hurt.
That way, everybody's got a clear understanding of what we're trying to accomplish.
It wouldn't hurt. Something else we're gonna want to see are drawings or renderings at some point in time.
Yes. That term sheet has to reference some plan.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta see what your improvements are.
Right. The CAD drawings will help us to be able to do that for you.
A, a, um, scope of work would be helpful too.
Sure.
In your term sheet. Yeah, get it, get us more is better.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we haven't said no to you yet, have we?
No, no, it's good. I like it. I'm like the sales guy. I'm, I want to go home.
Yeah. Well, you gotta stick around though.
Okay.
I'm personally requesting you stick around for a moment.
As, as long as we're not gonna talk about fuel up in Reno, that's-
No, not really.
Cause we're, we're running very low, as everybody is right now.
We can have that discussion offline. I have a solution to that, but I'll talk to you about, that's a separate discussion. No, I just want to talk to you about this offline.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration. We appreciate it.
For 90 seconds, okay, after the meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
No. Do we need a motion, Steve?
Do what? To say that we're-
To continue having a discussion with these gentlemen.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what the motion would be. I, I'm sorry.
We're, we're not approv, we, we, we're, we're, we don't have an agreement. We're working towards that agreement. So we're continuing a dialogue with them.
Yeah, I, I don't know. One thing that I would suggest is, if you guys decide that you would like to utilize the land east of Bravo for some greater purpose than aircraft storage, the sooner you can tell us, the sooner we can tell the appraiser so they can work it in, so we have an appraisal we can go forward. Because if we go forward with an appraisal for aircraft storage only, and then you later decide, you know, a month from now or two months from now, oh no, we really would like to see the appraisal for full use, um, then we're kind of, we're starting over again. We don't, we don't want to do that.
Based on what you said earlier, counsel, I mean, I think that the, that, that's a very important point. And, um, you know, I think when we request the appraisal from the appraiser, give us the per square foot for dry storage, give us the per square foot for FBO, you know?
Yeah, that's simple enough.
Okay. And then these guys have the ability to look at those two numbers and say, we'll take this many acres at this and that many acres at that.
Yeah, give us the lease, well, give us the lease rate for commercially used.
That would be the ideal thing to do, but I don't know if the appraiser was thinking that there would be that difference when they said, oh yeah, we can do that area easily because we've already done this area next to it. I don't know which portions of the assumption or the calculation are tied to the usage and whether that makes it a little bit harder to take what the work that they've already done and incorporate into this one. I just don't know.
I'll check with them tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, that, fair enough.
You know, my, my, and this is James, my, by looking at the appraisals, it doesn't even, it doesn't even look like the appraisals, or at least the other one that you provided with me, Michael, is, considers the infrastructure and development costs and improvements that would be needed. So I, I doubt they go into the detail of what's actually gonna be there if they're not even considering the-
They, they don't.
They're not even considering the infrastructure cost and the value.
And that's why I said I'm more than happy, James, to entertain the concept of getting another appraisal for the triangle, because they don't consider it there either.
Well, I did discuss that with the appraisers, and they did appraise it, understanding that infrastructure had to be brought in. That was part of, no, I want to clarify that, that they, that's why the parcel that was just recently leased went for a higher rate is because infrastructure was in place.
Okay.
And so she factored that in to these other two parcels. That was, it may not have been outlined in that, but it was part of the, it was part of the discussion when they came out to do it. So I can confirm that.
Okay. Um, fair enough. James, anything else? I know we've totally taxed your time with your family. Um-
No, 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 I, no, that's fine. I wanted to get this done. I mean, I, the comment I wanted to send, I think some of the board members have even said the same comment. We just, we don't want to spend, uh, we don't want to commit money on an appraisal. We don't want to spend more time with our engineers once we get CAD drawings or our terms by looking at these term, at these lease agreements, uh, unless we, at least, that, that, unless we know the rug's not gonna be pulled out from under us in a month or whatever it is by, uh, somebody else coming in, you know? somebody else coming in, you know what I mean? We just want that approval of, uh, moving forward in good faith, um, with all the details coming later, once these studies and, and appraisals and everything are done, um, that's what we're really looking for.
And this is Steve Takeus. You know, I understand what you're saying, and this is the way we all do business. It's more difficult with, um, a governmental entity, because this body really can't go any further than telling you that. I mean, they can't take action to lease without meeting all the requirements.
And I totally understand that. I, yeah, I totally understand that. They can't sign a lease without an appraisal backing up the lease rate. They have to publish it in a periodical, whatever it is that it's happening. I understand all that, I just don't want, uh, us moving forward with all this, because our understanding is this 12 acre parcel and this triangle parcel, I mean, there's a, a lot of infrastructure costs and everything that are going to need, not just need to be planned and designed, but paid for in order for them to, you know, have their true value, so.
So James, this is Brad. Are you asking for a motion? Is that what you're asking for?
Uh, well, it, it might be, I think, uh, Michael just said it might be redundant from what they already motioned and approved. Um, but I just want to make sure that, uh, we have that same understanding.
We, we can't give you a binding commitment, um, you have to assume some risk here. Okay, it, it just is what it is. Um, you have to assume some risk. I'll, I'll give you the, the best example I can give you. There was a time at an airport where my company responded to an RFP with other competitors. My company was awarded the RFP. The airport decided not to go forward with the agreement that they had already put into place with us. So, there is a risk in anything you do, and.
And I understand, and in my world with business, it's the same thing, once there's like a letter of intent with basic terms agreed to, um, it's not binding until it's under contract. I totally understand that. I just don't want.
Yeah, that's my point to you, is that, that, you know, unfortunately, our, our risks are bound on this, until the ink is dry, and the DA and the Board of Supervisors approves this, there's not a whole lot we can do, except continue moving forward with you.
Yeah, and I think that's probably what I'm all, I, I'm just asking, I just wanted to make sure, uh, everybody else is on the same.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I think it was maybe, uh, Tim, Tim had said the same comment, if, do we need anything more than what was already motioned and approved?
I, I just can't think of anything else we need to do here at this point. There's, there's going to be a point where you're going to have to take that risk and leap of faith, and go forward with us.
Oh, and we're, we're ready to, to make that leap of faith, that's for sure. I just don't want there, this to be some other obstacle that takes another four months before, uh, uh, you know, we know what we have to deal with here, so.
I, I think we've given you all we can, all I can tell you is to continue the dialogue.
Great.
Okay, I mean, we're, we're committed to that, that we're committed to.
And we're very grateful for the support. It's been very clear tonight, that you've asked a lot of good questions, and the support is here, and the spirit is here, and we're ready to move forward.
Okay, fair enough.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, James, appreciate it. Um, on that note, we're going to go to, unless there's any other conversation we need to have on this, um, we're going to go to the Airport Engineers Report, which is in your board packet. However, I have a matter that I want to bring up regarding the Airport Engineers Report. This was something that Carl and I have discussed at length, and I've discussed it with Tim, and I finally reached out and connected with, uh, Chris Knox, our engineer today. We have on our ASIP virtually no projects in a timeframe when the federal government is dropping money out of helicopters on public infrastructure projects. And I let Chris know that, you know, perhaps we weren't watching the ball enough a few months ago, six months ago, when the ASIP was put out, but I also said, um, that there is a project that we should accelerate and should prioritize that is grant fundable and eligible, and that is the extension of our runway from 6,100 feet to 6,900 feet, which is in our master plan. And I just want every one of you to know that I made that request of Chris, and I told him we expect that he's going to make that a priority project, because it would be an absolute travesty if this airport ended up with zero federal funding for projects or near zero this year, when there's funding all over the place for all sorts of projects. Um, one of the things Chris did tell me is, and this is something I'm going to have to work with Tim on, is in order for the FAA to consider that runway extension, we have to show a need, in other words, how many aircraft aren't basing at our airport? Uh, how many aircraft aren't taking off fully loaded because they can't operate out of the airport and go to the East Coast maybe fully loaded? How many aren't buying fuel, et cetera? How many aren't utilizing the airport? We have to come up with some sort of a narrative. I know it exists, and that's why it's on the master plan, but I have asked Chris to expedite that matter and see if we can start some sort of discussion with the FAA to get that project really as a priority in their eyes. So, just an FYI. Anyone have any questions about the Engineers Report? Exactly. Any comments about the Engineers Report?
No, it's pretty self-explanatory. There's very little. That's why he chose not to log in, it was so simple.
Right.
I think part of the narrative you referred to was just speaking to us.
Yes.
You know, and I, I think in all seriousness that, um, um, you know, I, I think that's important to, uh, hear that read back from you as to, you know, how we accelerate this or elevate this in the FAA's eyes, and, um, you know, I think we all, who have been around a while, know that that's a reality. I would suggest that there, there are two keys to bringing in more business and, uh, you know, higher, larger scale aircraft where there's a sweet spot, I don't mean commercial traffic, but, but businesses, and businesses with the next gauge up of aircraft. One is that nighttime approach, and one is a longer runway. We're hot and high, and a longer runway is always going to be better. And the reality is, it's always going to be safer for any aircraft. Okay, so I think that, that, that's really great to hear you say, and, and, you know, let's, let's put that narrative together.
Okay, fair enough. Managers' report?
All right, thanks, Michael. Um, pretty short, uh, basically, um, I use that, uh, that ForeFlight or that FlightAware, um, tracking software we put in, that Paul helped me, uh, help us put in a few months ago, and it shows that in the month of June, we had 1,435 arrivals and 2,105 departures, um, which is pretty much consistent. It hasn't really been going up or down too much over the last six months. Um, I did notice, uh, as I'm sitting in my little office looking out, that, uh, one of the High Sierra Pilots Club training aircraft was not showing up on the ADS-B, and I was a little concerned because that particular group does a lot of training, and they're just going around and around, and having ADS-B makes us all safer, and I contacted the owner just to ask him what his, you know, what his take on that was, and he says, he says, "Tim, actually, we installed one and it's failed." He says, "We plan on having all of our aircraft with ADS-B out," and that he was going to make certain that that stayed, stayed the course, so I was very pleased that Brad, uh, another Brad, God, there's a lot of Brad, um, was completely in a concurrent about the safety factor for this new beautiful software, so that's good to know. Just real quickly regarding bringing in the new airport manager, um, I went through all the diligence, you can see on my report, I went through all the agencies, we're on track with all the agencies. Um, there's a lot of confusion about how PERS works, and Bradley's call was actually not offended, not offensive to me at all, he was trying to be clarified on, on the PERS thing. It turns out this, with, the, the two programs, the employee half, where the employee pays half, the employer pays half, that was designed basically so if the employee takes half, you raise his income to offset what his half is, and the reason they did that was so if an employee thinks he's not going to stay with the state until he's vested, he has a chance to pull that money back out of the retirement fund. That's what that whole scenario was. It wasn't necessarily cheaper for the employer, it was going to be, it was going to be offset by his payroll. The difference in the two is less than a cent and a, a percent and a half, whether you go fully funded or partially funded, so I, it was, I had a long discussion with, uh, PERS today, so that was very helpful for me. So, just so you'd be clear, there's no real conflicts here, there's no real concerns, it's just a matter of understanding how the system works. So we're in compliance, we're in good shape there. I did have a chance to go in front of Stephanie Hicks and the, and the, and the Board of Supervisors and our friend Stan, uh, a few days ago to, uh, participate in the, um, in the Planning Board Retreat, Strategic Planning Board Retreat, and I did a quick presentation regarding our financial assistance for basically, um, upgrading the terminal, acquiring adjacent land, funding additional airport access roads if, if necessary, and, uh, I explained the difference between FAA AIP-funded money and what's not, so they, they, they understood better what we're looking for, because I was getting questions, well, what about the, the nighttime approach? And I said, well, no, I'm trying to let you know the things that are funded by the FAA and aren't, and we're looking for extra money with these other federal, like you said, the, the bucket loads of money coming out to help us with non-AIP grants at this point as well. So that was made clear. Uh, it was a very good, uh, good for me to experience that little meeting. Um, I was also contacted by Michelle Grover with the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection Agency. Michael actually had a chance to talk with her as well. Um, they're, they want us to, um, add in, apparently the former airport manager made an application that was not really accurate for how the airport works, an accepted, an exception type of an application, but upon discussion from Michael and I, it, we don't really work that way, we have to do it as one big parcel, and just make the rules for our tenants, uh, what has to be and what can't be for, um, environmental, um, compliance. So, uh, I asked her to give me a call back to help me with the application. I never got a call back, so I just went ahead and made the application based on the recommendation. Uh, I'm sure we'll hear back more from them if we did something incorrectly, but I didn't want to get us in jeopardy by not sending the application, so I just sent it in based on our discussions.
Right.
Okay. Uh, last, and then, uh, we talked about this task of, uh, upgrading the terminal landscape project, the signs in front, and I actually decided I'm just going to have, uh, our new, our new, uh, airport manager, Corey, make that one of his first projects to help us with that, because I'm just at a point where I'm trying to prioritize my time, and Michael keeps giving me more work, so. And then, I'm looking at the, the last little bit is the June fuel flow from, uh, um, from, uh, Mountain West, and, uh, we have, uh, in your packet, you can see it, 8,141 of 100 LL from the self-serve 2967 Jet A, full serve 24 100 LL and 113, uh, Jet A. So, that's my report. Any questions?
Thank you. Um, Steve, do you have a report for us, or you good?
No, I don't.
Okay, and John's not here to give a treasurer's report. Um, any authority members want to give a report on anything?
Sure, uh, as you all know, I've been really working on this plant, plant abatement, cleaning up the runways and everything like that, and, and Rick has been, been doing a great job at going after that. We were hoping to get that at this meeting. We've had a, a few holdups with vendors giving us bids on what it would take them to do, but we're going to have some, we should have something for you next, uh, next month, and, and you know, if we had to buy our own sprayer, it'd be below 20,000 bucks to be able to do it on our own, and it's probably where we're going to be headed on this thing.
Fantastic.
So that's, that's, that's coming along, and we hope to get that, uh, by next week. The, the other thing is too, is I think that we, we really need to, with Corey coming in, we need to make sure that he has real good priorities. One, as we just talked, the runway extension and lighting, and those, those really need to go to the top of his list. Now, he's going to be bogged down with a lot of administrative stuff and this, that, and the other thing. However, we need to be really clear that those are really important things for this airport, uh, to get going. So I don't know if we have any kind of a list or priorities or what, what, what we got, I'm sure.
We'll, we'll come up with one.
We'll, we'll come up with one.
I'll reach out to the board and we'll do, we'll do a formal priority list that we can all agree upon, that we can discuss together, and submit it, and we'll have a nice time to present it to him and discuss, and, you know, make him feel like he's part of the solution. All right?
Roger.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I'll just quickly note, uh, in, uh, kind of my role as, as point with the, the CTE folks that, you know, you heard from tonight. Um, tonight's matters were around the leased parcels. Um, I've had continuing parallel good conversations with them around the Fee Simple parcels that they own east of the intended 12 acre lease site, um, and have, uh, really appreciated Council Takeus's help in, uh, understanding the ins and outs of Title 19 regarding through the fence, um, and that's been very helpful in being a bit of an interlocutor with them around, you know, various options, uh, for different kinds of development in that, um, um, industrial park that they're proposing there that would have a pertinent large hangars to, uh, their office spaces. So, I just, uh, wanted to note that that conversation continues as well, and I would imagine that probably in the next couple of months, they'll, they'll have, um, maybe a bit of a proposal for us around what some of their plans might be there. I participated with Tim in a major projects review, uh, this past month at Carson City, which was a, a, an appropriate first step for them to go present the rough schematic of what they were thinking about, and get the kinds of feedback that, uh, Carson City typically provides from fire, environmental, planning, building, what have you. And, um, that was a good conversation, and, um, we're just, just, you know, doing the part alongside Tim to, uh, represent the airport's piece of that, and bring the questions back to council, and do you guys want appropriate?
Okay, thank you. Yes, Stan?
Well, I think everybody knows, uh, Carson City got $20 million under this American Relief Act.
Nope. We do now.
We did, we did. And Carson City, I'm talking city hall staff and that's right. We're at the growing stage. We're, we're, we're just about at the saturation point. The courthouse, uh, the judges tell us, and within the next year, they'll probably have to add another court to the Justice Court, and District Court will be down, so we're going to be shuffling people, people's going to be moved out. We have kind of, uh, done what you did, we've done tonight. We've directed staff to get an appraisal and evaluate the Bank of America building, and we're looking at buying it as a potential to solve all of our problems. And I've, you know, I saw in the paper today that, uh, Congressman Amadee has dumped a whole bunch of money on everybody in the North. I don't know if you saw, I think Carson City is going to get about $4 million in different projects. I think it might be wise for us to always hit our congressional people, because.
That's already been done.
Okay, but this is election, you know, election year's coming, and they always get little free, free handed when the election comes.
That's, that's, that conversation is ongoing.
Good, good.
That's all I can say.
All right, well, that's all, I, I thank you.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, on that note, our meeting is. Oh, public comment from someone? Sorry?
I got you, Brad.
Go ahead. Please introduce yourself, you have three minutes.
Uh, hello, good evening, uh, Brad Graeber here, and I want to start off by saying this is my first time in this, in this new, uh, remodeled building, and it's such a pleasure to see Bob Kroll's name above the door. What a great man and a wonderful person for our community. I don't know exactly how wide Bravo is, but my suspicion is, the center line denotes half of it right in the center, so that's half of the runway, or taxiway is probably against the dirt on the east side, and half of the taxiway is towards the hangars. I do know for sure that when WT Investment leased the land for, um, the Condominium Association, which I'm a part of, and I suspect also the Lance Project, um, they were, uh, committed to, uh, develop the, uh, we've always referred to it as an apron. So that means that we don't pay. the, we've always referred to it as an apron. So that means that we don't pay for that apron. And last time, when it was maintained, it was maintained with grant money, I suspect. We don't pay for the, I'll call it the apron on the far west side, which will be the larger hangars over there where Will Fletcher's hangar is. We do pay for our, I'll call them taxiways in between the buildings. We do not pay for the entrance to that line. So our, our lease actually starts at cement concrete, and it ends at cement concrete on the other side. There is a four or six foot, and I don't know exactly, on the south and north of the buildings, that's dirt, that we pay also. It's kind of a setback deal. So that really means that there's probably some FAA regulations that when that 12 acres goes away, part of that is going to be apron that belongs to the airport, unless something changes there, so that the lease won't start where the asphalt concrete ends today. The other thing is that I know from personal experience that you can buy a section of land, and you can start developing it, and then you can further cut it up when you're through. So it seems to me you have the option, if you get a good enough offer on a full 12 acres, if that's what it measures out to be, to just let it go, and the person that has the lease down the road can come back to you and start a process wherein they would then break it into three parts, or however many parts that they wanted to do. So I don't think you're mandatory have to cut it up right now. Your decision to make, of course. I have other things, but those are the most important ones, and it's just really nice to be in Bob Kroll's room. Nice to see you, Kroll.
Thank you, Brad. Good to see you too, Dr. Graeber.
Thank you, Brad.
Can't, can't ask.
Brad, I just want to let you know that we're going to research that, those lines, so we understand better as board members, those of us that are not knowledgeable. We're going to look into that so we can see that.
I have my machines, I have my machines in, but I didn't hear you.
We'll, we'll take care of it. We'll look into those landline options.
Thank you.
Just to, just to jump in on that, what Dr. Graeber's saying is exactly correct. When we leased the areas for those developments, we required them to pave a ramp area that was outside of their leasehold as an initial step to make sure that we had adequate room for airplanes and vehicles to pass each other. And so the airport has paid for the maintenance up to, I think it's 12 feet in front of the hangars or something. There's 15, 15 feet, whatever the FAA, the FAA has a limit on what you can do close, any closer than that to a hangar. And so, but we can, I can get you the exact layouts of that, and you can see it from when we leased that property. It was in the original bid documents, but that's correct.
It just helps us to understand better, so we know what we're looking at, yeah, as board members.
Thank you. On that, this meeting is adjourned.